Good evening, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, August 9th, 2021. This is Select Board Chair Steve De Corsi. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yeah.
John Heard?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Here.
Eric Helman?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chaplin?
Here.
Doug Heim?
Here.
And Board Administrator Ashley Maher is participating remotely. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act signed into law on June 16th, 2021, that extends certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. The act includes an extension until April 1, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 Executive Order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The Governor's Order, which you can find posted with Agenda Materials on the town's website for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, I'm going to offer a few notes. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that they may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record for the meeting. All participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted Agenda Materials on the town's website using the Novus Agenda Platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. We have a full agenda tonight, so let's see how much of the town's business we can get done. Before I do turn to the first agenda item, I do want to note that, for those of you viewing and expecting to see us in the Select Board chambers, with the change in the increase in the COVID transmission rates, the town issued an order earlier today through the Town Manager Chaplain, requiring face masks for all individuals in public buildings. The Board of Health will be meeting on Wednesday, and I believe will be providing further guidance in light of that and other issues that come into play for a meeting that could last three to four hours. We thought it best to have the meeting remotely. We will continue to monitor things through our Board of Health and Health and Human Services. I expect that our next meeting, Christine Bonjono, our Director of Health and Human Services, will be reporting to the board. She'll be meeting with the Board of Health on Wednesday. I believe she's meeting with the school committee on Thursday night. So before I start, Mr. Chaplain, did you want to add anything to that, just on the announcement on the, for the face masks?
Only to directly say, this is in direct response to the Delta variant and the surge underway in the nation, region, state, and even in Middlesex County. We are hoping, based on the science, we're saying that this will not be a long period of time, and we're going to be looking at this in very short increments of time. But as of today, as the Chair mentioned, putting a mask requirement in place for public buildings, as well as a strongly encouraged request of wearing masks in other public spaces has gone into effect.
Great, okay, thank you. So we will now turn to item two on the agenda, the Arlington Housing Authority Tenant Member Appointment. If you want to provide just a little background before we ask the individuals who have submitted expressions of interest to present to the board. Back in December, along with the Housing Authority, we nominated or selected an individual, Fiorella Bedilla, to fill an open seat on the Arlington Housing Authority. Following that appointment, the Legislature enacted Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020 that was signed into law on January 14th, 2021. That required that housing authorities have a tenant board member. The date, the Acts effective date was May 15th. And following that Act that superseded any other appointments that were made, that calls for a procedure to select, which is the Select Board's selection of a tenant member representative. The term of the appointment, and I'll turn to Attorney Heim, just for clarification on this, is through 2023. That goes along with the period of time for the other members of the Housing Authority. So Attorney Heim, if there's, I just want to clarify that that's the date that will be this term that we select, and if there's anything else you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just note that that term, the seat is for five years. However, we were three years into the seat that was coming up for, under the legislation, to have a tenant board member appointed. So the tenant seat is for five years, but we were three years into it due to the process and guidelines for how these things are supposed to be filled. And that was confirmed with DHCD, the Town Clerk, Housing Authority member, Jordan Preston, and Jack Nagel, the Acting Director of the Housing Authority, while instrumental in making sure that that was clarified and confirmed. So again, we're making, you'll be making appointment for, through 2023. It's, after that, it will be a full five years the next time around. But, but there was three years that had already been occupied for this specific seat. For the public certification, the reason you want to do that is you don't want multiple seats coming up in the same year. It's supposed to be on a rotating basis.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. And so we received eight individuals who either expressed an interest on their own or whose name was submitted through the clerk's office by the local tenant organizations, those being local tenant organizations at Winslow Towers and Cusack Terrace. We did not receive anything from Drake Village. And we received five individuals from Monotomy Manor. So what I'm going to do, we didn't receive anything from Chestnut Manor either. What I am going to do is first read the names of the individuals who will be talking with us tonight, seeking the appointment. And then we will call each one individually, ask them to present for a minute or so. I will ask board members if they have any questions for each of the candidates, and then we will move towards nominations and votes. So with that, the names of the individuals were posted on the agenda. Fiorella, and this is in alphabetical order, Fiorella Bedilla, Dylan Dalton, Pat Dunleavy, Pamela Hauser, Alicia Jones, Cynthia McGinty, Julia Moden, Vanessa Russell. Today, we were notified that Alicia Jones has withdrawn from consideration. And we're also notified that Ms. Dunleavy is unable to make it tonight. She did submit written materials for the board's consideration, and that is part of the agenda package. One further correction, Cynthia McGinty is listed as Winslow Tower. She's actually Cusack Terrace on the board's agenda. So with that, if we could go, Mr. Chaplain or Ms. Maher, if we could promote Ms. Bedilla, and we will go in alphabetical order down the list.
Hello?
Good evening, Ms. Bedilla.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Good, good. So if you could, we had received your written submission. And if you could take about a minute or so and let us know why you're still interested in being the tenant housing representative, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Fiorella Bedilla, and I live in Monotomy Manor at 63 Fremont Street. I am originally from San Jose, Costa Rica. Since last December, I have been honored to hold a position on the Board of the Arlington Housing Authority, replacing Rick Murray, who resigned. I have been an Arlington Housing Authority resident since I was 14. In the last eight months, I have learned a great deal about the duties a member of the board, which I can use to represent the interests of all Housing Authority tenants in the future. In addition to preparing and attending board meetings, I have completed the board member training course required by the state and attended the online conference sponsored by the Massachusetts Chapter of the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, and have had meetings with Jack Cooper, the Director of the Union of Massachusetts Public Housing Tenants. At Monotomy Manor, I have encouraged the expansion of the Monotomy Manor Garden Project and the organizing of a new Monotomy Manor Tennis Association. On the board, I have asked for the replacement of the leaky windows and doors in the Monotomy Manor apartments. And I am pleased to report that the formal assessment of these crucial issues will occur this fall. The formal assessment is necessary for applying for CPA and other funding mechanisms beginning in December with AHA seniors and those with disabilities until this spring. Since then, I have had occasions to interact with Drake Village residents, which is one of the four elderly state aided housing authorities, and learn about their concerns. On an initial tour, I sat down and had conversations with several residents. One was in Spanish with a woman from Colombia. The other occasion was at a reception at Drake Village following a board meeting. In July, I had a meeting with the newly elected officers of the Cusack Terrace Tenants Organization.
Excuse me, Ms. Bedilla? And so you're over the time, if you could, if you're wrapping up, if you could just wrap it up in the next few seconds, that would be great.
Okay. Going forward, my desire is to serve all of those who live in the Arlington Housing Authorities and work with the Board and Union of Massachusetts Public Housing Tenants to create the crucial conditions for them to have comfortable and productive lives. Thank you for considering me, and I look forward to continuing my work with the board and advocating for tenants' rights.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to go down the line, but by a show of hands, if there are any board members who have questions for Ms. Bedilla, but before I do that, I see Attorney Heim has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Mr. De Corsi and Ms. Bedilla. I just wanted to interject because I know that Mr. Heard wanted to say something at the outset of this. So I don't want to interrupt these questions or Ms. Bedilla's consideration discussion, but I wouldn't.
I appreciate that, and I'm sorry for missing that earlier. Yeah, Mr. Heard?
Yeah, no problem, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt Ms. Bedilla's presentation. But I had, I have spoken with Attorney Heim on this regarding, I do have a familiar relationship with the Operations Manager of the Housing Authority, who is currently serving as the interim Executive Director. And I have spoken with Attorney Heim, who, we've come to the conclusion that I can participate in the discussion and vote on this matter. But just to clear any potential appearance of conflict of interest and in the interest of full disclosure, I am going to just recuse myself from the discussion and vote on this particular item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heard.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any, any board members who have questions for Ms. Bedilla? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Bedilla.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Dylan Dalton.
I do not see Dylan Dalton in the attendee list, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, we'll go back if there is, if we do receive word later before we open nominations. Next on the list, Patricia Dunleavy was, is still on the list. And as I said, she had submitted written material. She is not able to be with us tonight, but I know board members have looked at the written submission, and we will consider that as part of the vote this evening. Next is Pamela Hauser.
I can promote Pam, okay, should be coming up right now.
Good evening, Ms. Hauser.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies of the Board of the Town of Arlington. My qualifications, I am a lifelong resident of the Town of Arlington. I was born and raised here. I have a degree in Business Management and Administration. I worked for the federal government for 17 years. I left after 9/11, when at the time, I was on the phone with a gentleman who was at the Pentagon and got killed while I was talking to him on the phone, which was quite a thing. I raised three children at Monotomy Manor through the 70s and 80s. I have, I have a unique perspective in the Arlington Housing Authority. My father, Robert Hauser, was the first Executive Director of the Arlington Housing Authority from 1949 to 1975, when he passed away from cancer at the age of 53. I have, I feel I, that the AHA needs a level head, and it's decisions that need to be come before the board, and I feel I give that. I have been attaining, I was very vocal in obtaining new elevators for Winslow Towers and new windows, which are currently under construction. I have the qualifications that I feel are required to be on this board. I am very vocal. I have been president of Winslow Towers for the past eight years. And the tenants don't want me to leave, and according to the regulations, I do not have to give up that position. I, my duties at the federal government, I was a GS5 Secretary, but my duties included that of Secretary, Supply Manager, Equipment Manager. I was in charge of space allocation, phone allocations, liaison for a building being built, and security. I feel I am quite qualified to handle the Arlington Housing Authority, and I am very willing. And I know all the other presidents of all the.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser, you're just about at your time limit, so if you just have a concluding sentence or so, that's fine.
I just feel I'm very qualified for this position. I hope the board will consider my appointment.
Thank you very much. Do any board members have any questions for Ms. Hauser? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hauser.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Sure. Okay, next is, and as I said, Alicia Jones is no longer a candidate. Cynthia McGinty is next.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see Cynthia McGinty either.
Next, and again, if McGinty joins us before we close the presentations, we'll allow her to come on. Next is Julia Moden.
Mr. Chair, I do not see Julia Moden.
Okay, and I will point out to the public, we did reach out to all of the candidates today to inform them that we would be having the meeting remotely and invited them to join us. We also reached out last week when we set this agenda item up. When we reached out for additional written materials, we offered the opportunity to present to the board this evening. Okay, Vanessa Russell?
Okay, I think she is, I think she is here under a different name, let me see here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Mahan?
I do see Ms. Roswell on chat, and perhaps she's logged in under a different name, maybe she can just provide that to chat, so, unless Mr. The Town Manager is on there.
I think we have fun, Vanessa.
I did not submit my letter because with time restraints and a lot of other stuff going on, I've decided to withdraw.
Okay.
But as you know.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so that, that completes the list of candidates. Is there anyone else on the list of speakers that we've heard through the chat? I do know that Ms. Jones and Ms. Dunleavy did contact the board office today to let us know that they would not be able to make it. Well, we have one more check to see if there is any, any others waiting.
It does not appear so, Mr. Chair. I would just ask if anybody is waiting to present, and I'm not seeing your name. If you could try to raise your hand, just to make sure that I'm not missing you. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chaplain. I don't see any hands either on that list. Okay, so what we will do now, I will open nominations, actually take a motion to open nominations. Anyone?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Mr. Diggins. So on a motion to open nominations by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
It's a four zero vote.
Okay, and again, I won't go down the line if there are any members that would like to nominate any of the individuals who submitted expressions of interest, please do so now. Show of hands. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I want to say from the presentations we've gotten tonight, and I mean this with all sincerity, as well as, we did have some written attestations sent to us. We have so many candidates that really, really would like to appoint them all. However, I do know, as part of what we've heard and, and or read, the majority, if not all of them, are very actively involved in AHA properties and, and working with their neighbors and also working through COVID-19. And I read some of that statements of things that they did safely. And I want to thank you on behalf of the town because everybody was really just getting on this ride and trying to figure out how to maneuver it. With that, I would like to nominate Fiorella Bedilla.
Thank you, is there a second? Second from Mr. Diggins, okay, any other nominations? Okay, seeing, seeing none? Yes.
I'm sorry, could I move to close nominations?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, yep, no, absolutely, do we have a second? Okay, motion to close nominations by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes. Okay, and now with one, one individual nominated, and I also want to thank everybody who expressed interest in the Housing Authority position and for submitting written materials and being involved in, in, in the town. So with that, we have one nomination before the board, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
It's a four zero vote.
Great, thank you very much. Could we bring back Ms. Bedilla for just a moment? Ms. Bedilla, congratulations, and I want to thank you for your presentation tonight and for the work that you described over the past several months. And as we said at the beginning of the session, this is a two-year appointment. And just again, I mentioned, I meant to mention this earlier. We had confirmed that all of the candidates were registered voters in Arlington, that is a requirement. And so everybody met that requirement. And I don't know if any of the board members have anything that they want to add, but wanted to bring you back to congratulate you.
I appreciate that, thank you, guys. I'm still looking forward to the next two years.
Great, great, Mr. Diggins?
And I just wanted to add that I am, I'm really happy that you wanted to continue working with AHA. There are lots of reasons that I nominated you back in December. And, and from what I hear from other members of the, of the board and my colleague, and you've done very well. I have intentionally not be hovered, be out of respect for, for you and, and, and also as a sign of my confidence, you know, and, and be part of wanting you to be on the board was for you to grow into the role and then grow, also grow as a person who is interested in civic engagement. And, and I think you've done a great job, you know, and, and I encourage you to continue working with us and maybe even in larger realms, so thanks for continuing.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, I actually would like to comment. I look forward to working in involving youth around Arlington to local government, so, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, and Mrs. Mahan?
Just, no matter what, it's a board of five. Originally, Ms. Bedilla came in to fill out Mr. Murray's seat. Someone had asked me now if she were successful for the tenancy, what happens to Mr. Murray's seat? And I don't know if you, Mr. Chair, or Attorney Heim, I think it's sort of an osmosis situation, but if somebody could just provide more clarity on that.
Yeah, and Attorney Heim, correct me if I'm wrong, but this tenancy effectively, Mr. Murray's seat is effectively now the tenancy. And so that will be merged and will, from this point forward, be the tenancy.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct, yeah. The, the way it works is if there was no vacancy, we would have had a different process. But because Mr. Murray vacated the seat, we were able to appoint Ms. Bedilla to fill that vacancy until such time as the regulations had been promulgated. So they are essentially now the, the same line of seats.
Great, thank you, Attorney Heim. Anything further, Mrs. Mahan?
No, I want to say thank you to both Learned Council for clarifying that. I wanted to make sure, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Helman?
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Ms. Bedilla, thank you for your willingness to serve your community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and then best, best of luck moving forward, Ms. Bedilla.
Appreciate that, thank you, guys, have a great night.
Sure, you too. Okay, so that concludes item two. We will wait for Mr. Heard to get back. I will announce agenda item three, approval of sale of $162,225 sewer bond to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority for Inflow and Infiltration Local Financial Assistance Program. Phyllis Marshall, our town treasurer, will be presenting, and I believe she's here with us.
I am, sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Marshall.
Good evening. I am before you, seeking your approval of this bond of $162,225. It is the loan portion of the project that was submitted by Mr. Ottemacher. There is also a grant from the MWRA in the amount of $486,675 for 75% of that project. And the scope of that project is, was submitted to you for design, bid, and award for improvements to rehabbing and reconstruction of the sewer system and related facilities. And also for post-construction flow evaluation from a previous phase of project. So it's a great opportunity for us, it's interest-free loan. And so I would hope that in accordance with the 2020 Annual Town Meeting vote of Article 59, you would give positive consideration to this sale.
Great, thank you, Ms. Marshall, turn to the board now, Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to move approval, and I just have one very quick question, if I could. On page 10, under Scope of.
On page 10, under Scope of Services.
Yes.
I understand sometimes numbers are used as numbers, and sometimes they're used as sort of non-numbers. So I just wanted, I just had a question where Task One and Two are part of Phase Number 13, and Task Three, the closeout, is part of Page Number 11. Is there a 12? And I only say this that if for some reason there was a typo, which I'm sure there isn't, so.
There is Phase 12. But I don't have information on this project right now. It, I don't. I think it's underway, but I can't be certain. I can follow up with Mr. Rodamacher.
Yes, if you could, and if you, as a follow-up to that follow-up, I'm going to assume, because we can only authorize and vote what's contained here before us under Scope of Services. I'm assuming Phase 12 will have an additional cost, and we'll have to deal with that in the future. And if you just could, after you follow up with Mr. Rodamacher, whoever else you deem appropriate on what Phase 12 is, if just there's some sort of approximation or estimate. Not asking where the funding is going to come from, just, and that would be it. I want to thank Madam Treasurer, you've done such an exemplary job that I never really come in and bug you or anything because everything's running so well, including the staff in the office, who are very appreciative. So I'd like to see a woman in our upper ranks. So I do appreciate that. And with that, I'll turn it back to the chairman. Thank you for the leniency there.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I will move, I will second the motion, and no further comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins.
Oh, he broke my streak of seconds.
Okay, we just lost you. Any further comments?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Helmut.
No comments, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I have no comments either. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Marshall. Okay, on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd to approve the sale of the bonds, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes. Great, thank you very much, Ms. Marshall. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Heim. Agenda item four, Presentation, Bus Network Redesign. Daniel Amstutz, I believe the town manager, Mr. Chaplin, will be introducing this item, and we have at least one or two guests from the MBTA with us tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just promoted Melissa, I'm gonna pronounce her last name wrong, likely, Delia from the MBTA. And she will be providing the board an update on the MBTA Bus Network Redesign program that they'd like to bring the board up to speed on and answer any questions that the board might have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Good evening, Ms. Delia. Is that correct on the pronunciation?
It's Delay.
Delay, okay, we're sorry.
Nice.
Okay, yeah, the floor is yours. And we did receive the presentation in our agenda. There's some written materials that we received, but go right ahead.
Fantastic. So I will take about 10 minutes to go through the presentation that was provided to you, and I'll let you know when I'm changing pages. So just by introduction, my name is Melissa Delay. I'm Senior Director of Service Planning for the MBTA. I've been here for 21 years. And I'm pleased to be before you, members of the select board and town manager.
Excuse me, one second, Ms. Delay. Mr. Chaplin, is there a way that we can share the presentation? So the public's benefit? There it is. Okay, yeah, if you can say, sorry to interrupt, but that way it will be right there in front of us.
Super. That's a lot easier to follow. Thanks for the idea. So if you go to the next slide, the main takeaway here is that we have a number of initiatives under the umbrella of the Better Bus Project, whether that is bus priority or fleet and facilities, modernization or operations processes. But among these is the Bus Network Redesign. So I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. So what is a Bus Network Redesign? It's a complete reimagining of the MBTA's bus network to better reflect the travel needs of the region and create a better experience for current and future riders. And what we're looking to achieve through that is better frequency, service that's fast and reliable, and making sure that we're connecting to key destinations and creating a legible network that's simple and easy to use. So on the next slide, I am showing that a Bus Network Redesign generally serves the same neighborhoods and streets, but it connects them in different ways to make a network that is better for riders. So on the left, sort of sample illustration, we have here, you have a lot more routes with deviations where they might be on one corridor, and then they turn off to go to other corridors. You have a lot more complexity, and in in the end, you actually have less frequency on any single route. On the right example, this is showing a lot more direct services. It's simpler and more legible. And because the routes aren't taking these deviations to get to other places, you end up with more frequency on any single route due to those shorter routes, even though those two networks might use the same number of bus resources, being, you know, buses and operators. So that's what we're hoping to achieve with the Bus Network Redesign. Through route change, you can get better frequency, better legibility, and easier to understand routes for our existing riders, but also for, you know, new or infrequent riders who might see that as being a real barrier to understanding a bus service. On the next slide, I'm just trying to show what you can expect through a Bus Network Redesign process. We're looking to see a more equitable network, a network that's simpler and easier to understand, more high-frequency corridors, better connections to major local and regional destinations. We've heard very many folks say that, you know, our existing network, you know, dates in many cases, you can look at routes from the 40s and see the exact same routes. But that means that places that have seen a lot of development since then, whether that be, you know, Kendall Square or the Longwood Medical Area, are sometimes left out of our existing network connections. And we also want to focus on all-day service with more buses in the midday, evening, and weekends. And I'll just underscore on that last point. This has been part of our plan for the last two years, but with COVID and the changes to the way that people work, we think that's probably going to transform into differences in the future of work, and that, you know, the peaks might be a little less peaky in the future if there continues to be some sort of, some number of hybrid workforce, maybe not coming in every day through the week, but, you know, even two or three or four days per week can mean that we can reallocate some of those peak period resources into other parts of the day and have a more all-day type network. On the next slide, we start getting into some of the metrics that we're going to use to score the success of our new networks. And to that end, we actually, just in June, added three new metrics to our service delivery policy, which is what defines how we sort of score ourselves in terms of service quality. We added three new metrics, looking at equity, looking at access, and looking at competitiveness. Now, in terms of equity, we'd be looking at how are we providing transit critical populations with equitable transit service? And by transit critical populations, I mean, you know, how are we serving low-income populations, people of color, seniors, people with disabilities, and low or no-car households? Because we found that those are people who are more likely to be using our transit services. And then similarly, how are we connecting people to the places that are most important to them? And I'm going to get into some really interesting data sources that we're using on that metric in particular. And lastly, is the MBTA a good choice for people who are making these trips? And that gets at competitiveness, you know. Is a, is the travel time for a transit trip competitive with what someone would be making with the travel time someone would use to make that same trip biking or walking? How much of a difference is that? Because often our trips are very radio-y oriented, which means that we can have really long travel times for some of these kind of crosstown circumferential trips. You know, thinking like in Arlington to Medford or other suburbs that are close, simple to bike or drive to, but very complicated in some cases to use transport. On the next slide, this gets into one of our upcoming data sources that we're using. This is the first initiative in my knowledge at the MBTA where we've used location-based services data. And what that is, is cellphone data that's been anonymized, that we can use to monitor no individuals. Of course, that's been anonymized, but looking at what overall trip making is in the MBTA's service area. And it's looking to see not just for transit trips, but all trip making, whether that's walking or biking or driving. Because one of the things, you know, traditionally, we do a lot of work with ridership data, but inherent in that ridership data is what your network is. And we wanted to take sort of a blank sheet approach to say, well, where do people want to go, not just where we go today. So it's a really exciting and rich data source that we've been mining. So on the next slide, you can see, actually, sorry, there was one important point on the previous one, if I could just go back. One other thing that's really interesting about this new location-based services data is that you can tag it to a certain geography, and associated with that geography are demographics. Like I was mentioning, it's very important to us to look at our transit critical ridership. And the way we get that isn't from knowing who has a specific cellphone device, because it's anonymized, so we don't actually know that. But we are able to tag it to the demographics of a particular geography. And then we can actually see how that person's travel is linked with multiple trips. So it's not just that people are only ever taking trips from their home to work or home to wherever it is that they're going. But in many cases, people are going from home to daycare, and then daycare to work, and then work to the grocery store. And they're chaining together those trips that might be, you know, multiple trips through multiple geographies. And the streetlight location-based services data that we get is able to follow that individual and keep the demographics of that trip as we followed around. So as we're looking at how different trips are being served by a network that we create, we're able to look at the demography of that, because often you have people with all sorts of demographic backgrounds traveling kind of in other areas through, you know, downtown Boston, especially is often a tricky place where many of the trips in downtown Boston aren't by people who necessarily live there. So it's able to give us better information that's really exciting for us to use and helps us to use some of these new metrics that I've been mentioning earlier. So going to the next slide, there's a lot of detail here, but it's just at a very high level talking about the data that we are using from the streetlight data, and then how that gets kind of drilled down to say, okay, here are the areas of demand that we look at, and here are the connections of certain or origins to destination location that create corridors. Those get snapped to to specific roadways, looking at, you know, where are there possible streets that meet our grade requirements, that don't have low clearance bridges, that are on streets that are appropriate for bus usage. And then lastly, we haven't quite gotten to this stage yet, but how do we turn those into specific bus routes that have starting locations and ending locations and layover locations and stops, and all those other things that we need to do to create actual bus routes? So in terms of the process, we are starting with the process of creating the high-frequency corridors so that we can have those lead conversations with municipalities about where we can look to create priority treatments, which can help us unlock even more corridors as we're designing these routes. But in terms of high frequency, what I mean by that is, you know, routes that look like today's Route 77, where you have service that runs seven days a week. You know, minimum frequency is every 10 minutes or better, or maybe even more frequent than that during rush hours with a span of service that goes from the, you know, 5:00 AM till past midnight. So that's the type of service that we want to have more of, because it's simple. You don't even need a schedule to show up often. You can just be confident that you'll show up, and there'll be a service there, and you don't have to be tied to a specific schedule. So imagine the Route 77, but more of that is what we're trying to create. At the same time, in order to create more of that, the way that we can allocate more resources to places is to have infrastructure to support it, whether that means bus priority, either, you know, bus lanes, if there is right of way to support that, or in places with more tight roadways, if it means, you know, transit signal priority and huge jumps at congested intersections or other, even, you know, other types of investments of, you know, the bus stops where we can put parking and layover locations are also important. And then lastly, these would be presented to the public through a different type of route nomenclature, so that people would know that this is a different kind of service. We haven't gotten into this detail, but my vision is to, you know, show this on, you know, if we could have it on a spider map in every subway station, so that the high-frequency bus network would be as legible and iconic as that spider map that shows, you know, where all the rapid transit lines go. And if you can show where all the other places you can get to that are high-frequency, that you can expect that high-quality, reliable service. So that's the the vision. So on the next slide, we get into the five-year implementation timeline. We're here now where we're working on a draft network. The plan is to be able to share specific actual routes in the fall and have a more extensive public process. The plan is to adopt the final network in early 2022 and to implement over the course of perhaps the earliest implementation could be in fall of 2022. With continued implementation, this would be our roadmap for, say, the next five years of where we would implement changes. The earliest changes would be more things like changes that don't require, you know, new accessible bus stops or new construction of bus priority, if it's a matter of kind of changing signage and reallocating our existing buses. Those are the things that would be most likely to be implemented upfront. We'd probably do kind of waves by geography, you know, routes in the west versus routes in the south at a different time, just to kind of make it easier to get the signage updated rather than, you know, update all the signs overnight. And then there there might be other things that do require more capital-type work that implementation would come as those projects allow it. For example, you know, we've long talked about making more transit connectivity into the Longwood Medical Area, but many of those would only really be possible with a lot more transit priority through some very congested streets or making more like transit hubs in that area. So those are the types of things that might take a little while to. On the next slide, at a very high level, just trying to say that, you know, we're all here to try to make a better rider experience. And we're focused on kind of the upper right-hand corner of this slide with the Bus Network Redesign, how we need a new network that goes where people need it to go and when they need it, and that's easier to understand. But this all exists in the context of other initiatives that are ongoing at the MBTA, whether that's bus priority, whether that's fleet and facilities, electrification of the bus fleet, et cetera. So I just have a couple more slides. We recognize that change will probably be hard. We can make the network better for the vast majority of current riders, but to make that happen, many people's trips will change, and for some people, it will get worse. In Houston, and we use Houston as as an example, one of our consultant team members is a former board member from Houston, where they engaged in a similar reimagining of their bus network. And there, the number of riders with all-day existing service tripled, and ridership grew by 17% in the end when they implemented. But the public complaints in the five months before implementation outnumbered positives 330 to 1. So we recognize change is hard, but that to truly transform the network, we need to take, we need to make trade-offs, and we're using everything we've heard from writers to think through that. And then also, just to illustrate that, we have some graphics here on the map. These are actually from Miami. On the top, you have kind of their pre-Bus Network Redesign network, and then below you have their post-network redesign network. Above, you can see that they value shorter walks to the buses. So you can see there's a lot more routes, and they're a lot more closely spaced, whereas the the bottom network values more of those high-frequency connections. They're saying that it's okay to walk a little bit farther if it means that you're walking to a high-quality transit. And the way you can tell is those red routes in the bottom are more of those like high-frequency think like today's key bus routes type services, where you can walk up and expect to bust, you know, pretty much any time of the day. So you can see the trade-off we're looking to make is, can we get, you know, more high-frequency, even if it makes, it means that some people might have to walk farther for certain trip. So on the next slide, what So on the next slide, what are our commitments? What do you first and foremost? We want truly transformational change. We want a better network for the people who ride today. We want extensive stakeholder engagement. We actually want to implement this in the near term. And we want to integrate service changes with bus priority and other infrastructure to maximize benefits. But we need your help to make this happen. So on the next slide, municipal partnerships are a key to success. We can only succeed at implementation where we have partnerships with municipalities that can help us advance change. And those partnerships can take several forms. We need effective transit priority and congested corridors. That can mean bus lanes, it can also mean huge jumps in transit signal priority. But some of the other kind of unsung heroes of the municipal partnerships, I like to call them, are things like layover locations because you need a place to turn the bus around. Those five minutes at the end of the line are critical for us to maintain reliability of trip departure times. They're critical for ensuring that, you know, the operator can find a place for their operator break and can use the restroom somewhere. And often it's, it's a challenge to cite layover locations, especially when you have like congested busy urban areas with shop owners and delivery services and parking, I know, can be at a premium in certain urban portions of our network. We also need bus shelters, finding places or doing construction to get accessible bus stops. And also very important, we need new and upgraded garages to be able to operate this service. Many of our garages are sort of at their useful life and we're having lots of conversations on how to either upgrade those or in some cases potentially replace those just to maintain existing capacity. And then also we're having conversations about what it would take to increase our capacity to store buses so that we can, you know, in the context of potential future expansion. So in terms of bus network redesign, public outreach, we are sort of in the middle, though today a little bit earlier because this was from an earlier deck. So pardon that. But the plan is that we're going to have a draft network this fall, which will be associated with more public outreach. We've also started having some kind of leading outreach. Actually, today I'm pleased we had a meeting with town manager and a number of staff from community development, economic development of the Arlington Police Department's Traffic Department was there to start having those conversations about partnerships in Arlington specifically. And we've been having a roundabout reach with many of our core municipalities for those similar conversations as well. And then implementation, as I mentioned, we're looking to get to implementation by approximately fall of 2022. As at least the, the, the leading start of implementation. And again, that will be a multi-year process. So with that, I will end my presentation and I was pretty close to 10 minutes. And I will ask if there are any questions.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Lay. And I, I will turn to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Heard.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. It's, I think change can be hard, but done in the right way can certainly lead to improvements. We've people in Arlington definitely use the bus system. They value the bus system and will have a lot of input from both town staff, town leaders and residents as to what we could do to increase efficiency of the bus systems. We've, we have already taken steps with the bus rapid transit program that we went through to move towards bus prioritization. That, that's been very well received. And so I look forward to what's, what if any suggestions will come out of that. I guess the good thing in Arlington is all, all our routes are already for the most part on some of our more centralized thoroughfares. So you shouldn't I, I don't anticipate there'll be major changes. But I am excited to see what we can come up with. And it's good to hear that you'll be looking for input and public engagement and partnerships in order to because every municipality is different and changes that work in one municipality might not work well for another one. So we'll be happy to be part of the process. I know Mr. Diggins will be intricately involved in that. We'll have many discussions with you, I'm sure about the, what, what changes we need and what routes we need to keep. What, just one question, if you know, and I assume just in the COVID era that ridership is quite down. As far as the, what weight of the ridership data, is that based on pre-COVID numbers or is it going to be more, is it current ridership data? And I only ask because the one thing that we've been blessed with in Arlington is a very careful and conscientious residents in light of the pandemic in, whereas, you know, we had very, we had a lot of ridership before COVID. You know, I'm sure in Arlington, it's far down because people are just cautious about their exposure. So is it going to be both pre-COVID numbers versus current numbers or just current numbers?
That's a very fair question. So thanks for bringing that up. So when I've been mentioning the location-based services cellphone data that we're using to drive a lot of the planning for the network, that's all using pre-COVID data. We're not comfortable that if we were to use today's numbers, that those are necessarily representative of what the long-term plans are. Though the, the one thing that it's also interesting is that we're trying to create a process that's replicable so that say in five years or, you know, some point in the future, we could use this process again to try to see what gaps are to account for any, you know, changes in the future of work. Because there's a lot of questions as to, you know, how much of the changes are going to turn out to be permanent, but we just don't have a crystal ball to show that right now. But we want to be able to do something that's replicable. And then also something that might acknowledge, you know, developments that we know are already in the pipeline. Because we're basing it on 2019 data, like, or even developments that have come online in the last two years, like that's not in the data. So again, we're using pre-COVID data, but we want to do something that's replicable so that we can continue to update and look for, you know, gaps where you know, maybe the transit system isn't serving a, a large amount of trip making well.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Melissa, it is so delightful to see you, you know, so Melissa, I, I've known Melissa since the beginning of the Rider Oversight Committee is several capacities seen at the MBTA and CTPS, right? Such a transportation planning staff?
No, just MBTA.
Just MBTA, okay. You know, so and, and she's just been so helpful to the Rider Oversight Committee in helping us understand a lot about service delivery. And I'll say it's because of knowing how involved you've been with service delivery that is the only reason I'm a little skeptical about the bus design thing because, because I know all that went into making, you know, our current system work as well as it does, you know, because it's, it's a complicated system because we, our road network is complicated. And then on top of that, you have all these cars. And, and the buses work really well if there weren't any cars there, you know, and, and I think whatever redesign we do, if we don't somehow minimize the cars, we'd, we're going to still have bus bunching and, and other problems that affect service. So I think it's going to be incumbent upon a lot of us, me, in the various municipalities to do what we can to get those cars off the road to emphasize the sustainable aspect of not having so many single occupancy vehicles and maybe be working on car sharing. So we're going to have to come at this from multiple angles. So, and the equity part is going to be a little challenging because we, they, it'll be interesting to see if those who suffer a less convenient ride, for lack of a better word, or, or those who you said would, would find that things are a little worse, meaning if they don't fall into a certain category that then becomes problematic. So, so you certainly have you slash we have our work cut out for us. And, and with respect to that bus garage, I don't know if anyone ever told you about my idea for the bus garage, I kind of campaigned on it, being Arlington Center, it'd be below with a big tower of opportunity and, and innovation on top of which can also help with some of our housing and, and financial base. And, and, and I could go on, but I'm not, because we have a very long agenda and I know I have a lot of access to you, but thank you so much for coming. It really has been a pleasure seeing you, listening to you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helms.
Thank you. Thank you for a great presentation. Following one of the points that my colleague, Mr. Diggins made, I kind of have a, a bigger picture question for you. I fully appreciate and applaud that you're starting places is equity and the riders and the people writing the system now and making sure that they have an optimal experience to get where they want to go. I think that's your mission. But another lens to look at transit is, is sustainability. And, you know, the UN's devastating report on the climate change that just came out in the last 24 hours or so, you know, reminded us all that we're running out of time. So we know that for lots of reasons, not just, you know, including helping the buses run better, but we need to reduce the number of, of single car trips particularly. And so my, my question is when the MBTA sets its metrics and sets its goals, does it also, to what extent does it look at increasing ridership? And yes, including the people who ride now, but people who aren't riding. People who would ride if there were better transit to where they needed to go. And would the MBTA even go so far as to say how many car trips can, can we replace? And, you know, I know that that's some of that is structural, some of that is, is your charge from the legislature and from the government. So, yeah, but I'm, I'm curious to what extent that perspective informs the work that you do, the goals that you set and the metrics by which you measure yourselves for this kind of program.
Those are some really interesting questions. And while like transitioning doing modes shift isn't explicitly a goal, I think that the, the way that we're going about this by looking at all trip making, which does includes, include, you know, general auto motorist trips as well. And trying to say, you know, can we improve our competitiveness? Because oftentimes those motorists are driving because the transit trip is truly terrible. And it really is their best option. And you, you can't expect someone to take like three buses and two transfers to get, you know, just across town on what's a very simple drive. So I think I think we can get at what you're getting at, even though that's not explicitly one of the things that we're, we're looking at.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, you know, I noted that it's a side effect, it's a good one, that in Houston, the ridership went up. And I think this, this is probably something that municipal leaders who want to act locally on climate and in transit probably need to be in contact with our state leaders to say that maybe this can be part of the MBT's job to, you know, to provide some type top-down guidance, guidance about that, how we think about transit from both ends, both from serving the riders, but also in, in, in growing that that mode shift, which is a new term I've learned. And I'm not in any danger of being, being Len Diggins, but I'm glad to learn new transit terms. So thank you. No further, no further questions. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Mrs. Mahan.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't know if we need to have a move receipt or so I'll
That would be great. Yes.
Okay. And then I'm going to try to be brief. And if there are any, hopefully of my three or four questions that there's a lot of information about, if we could, as a board, get that further on down the road. And the first one may not really, but I think it might come under public hearings and gathering information. I know that labor workforce development along with the DOT Department of Transportation recently, it was a really quick study. I think it was only like six months. Came out with traffic data related to each of their purviews. Workforce development around the hybrid remote model and DOT in terms of scheduling projects on the state's highways and other state-owned property. And what they came out with is that they're seeing a trend that especially with the remote hybrid working that Monday, Friday is more turning into a lighter day. Tell some people coming out of Boston, but believe it or not, and the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the ones that the roads are really crowded parking lot even pre-COVID. So I would just ask, and this may already be being considered, considered that when we talk about buses, I, I would not, nobody would want to see the same situation where whatever the routes are, Monday and Friday, you can get on there, you feel real safe because, you know, there's three rows before there's another person. And then if what the initial modeling, and it is brand new, there's only one study that's come out, but it seems like it's going to bear out Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, more cars in the road which equates to also Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, more riders on the T. So you all have to study that and, and figure it out. But that would be one of my adding a public participation sort of thing. And then I'll keep going. Okay. The next question or questions, I want to have the caveat, I am not trying to be get brownie points and apples for my teachers with the planning and community development director as well as our energy manager. But our next discussion is on Arlington's Net Zero Action Plan. And I only, I wouldn't ask these questions, but on your presentation on slide 10, it's sort of superficially discussed. But then on slide 11, it's more explicitly discussed. So I have two, maybe three questions, if you know, if not, or maybe it's still in discussion. What the board is going to discuss amongst many other things are, is adopting a zero emission municipal fleet and charging infrastructure plan. No later than, there's more words to it, no later than 2030. Do you know, has the MBTA done that? Or something similar to it? Maybe it's not 2030.
I know we do have folks who are looking at future bus fleets and specifically adoption of electric buses. I don't know the exact timeframe, but I'd be happy to get Scott Hamway or Bill Wolfgang to communicate to you what those timeframes are. We have, we have a fleet and facilities plan that has dates and estimates, but I just, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. If you could just find out, I know pretty much, not pretty much nationally, but trending nationally is, is discussing this by 2050. Arlington's a little more trying to be upfront and leading with the 2030. So if you could find out that question, if you're 2030, 2050 for zero emissions for your fleet, not municipal and other, you know, dial-a-ride, things like that. And then my second question would be, and again, referencing the pages 10 and 11. I, I would be interested as well as with my colleagues and perhaps this can come through our colleague, Mr. Diggins, Diggins getting the information, getting it back to us. But on that same sort of line of questioning, you do say fleet and facilities, we need to replace old buses and, you know, kind of the question that I'm asking about zero emissions for your fleet. And then when I look at the implementation timeline, five years, which brings you to 2026, I don't really see anything in there unless I don't see there anything in there about that particular area. So my question would be, is it in there, but it's another facet of the MBTA and a different committee and consultant that's discussing that? Or does it mean it's not in, up until 2026, it's going to be sometime after? So those would be my questions. So if you want to take any of them, or if you'd rather just go back and make sure to get all the information, I'm happy with that. And thank you. I, I only ask this because I'm brand new to Arlington's Net Zero Committee. Believe it or not, unlike tonight, I try to say next to nothing because they're all the professionals and that they've been doing this and know it inside and out. So I'm taking a little bit of knowledge that I've sat and listened and learned from them and using it here. So thank you, Ms. Delaney.
And thanks for those comments. I'm happy to tackle that last one in particular with a little bit, but just at a very high level, no, this is the bus network redesign. So we're looking at route changes that we can implement over the next five years. There are other people who are working on a separate initiative, looking at bus fleet and bus facilities. That's like a 30-year plan because, you know, life cycles of buses are, you know, 12 years and life cycles of garages are like 30 years and, you know, getting all those kind of spaced out appropriately so that you have swap space, we can shift buses as you're doing construction in one garage and moving to the next one. That's We can shift buses as you're doing construction in one garage and moving to the next one. That's a decades long process. So, you know, this is interfacing with that project and it's influenced by the facilities project, but it's totally separate in terms of like they're on a very different time scale than we are.
No, I totally understand that. That's the court reporter in me. It's kind of like if you put something in the document, you've now opened that door. So I guess what I would say is, if you're going to make this presentation, I mean, I truly wanted for the, the knowledge and information, I'm not saying other people won't. You may want to rewrite that, or since it's not in your 2026 plan of what you oversee, you may not want to put it in there because I know my interest is unstable. Somebody's going to ask you a question if it's in there like that.
So actually, they're going to ask me that question, even if it's not there. That's why you put it there because people are like, oh, bus network redesign. Like, everybody is asking about that. So I definitely appreciate that question. But then also, one of the first questions you also had was about the days of the week, which is actually really interesting because during COVID, our busiest day has been Friday of all things. So even though, you know, employment wise, we see that long-term people are thinking about coming in three days a week and maybe working from home on Monday, Friday. That's kind of what we've heard from some of our surveys of employers in the Boston area that we've been conducting or that our Office of Performance Management and Innovation has been conducting. But like I said, work trips aren't necessarily all the trips, and we find that people are more likely to make other types of trips. And again, our highest ridership day is on Friday. And also really interesting, if you look at our ridership by time of day, it's very, very stable on weekends. So, you know, people still need to, you know, do their grocery shopping and do those other things and making all those other types of trips. So even though work commutes are way down right now, we still see a lot of those off-peak trips are still being made with the same frequency that they were made beforehand. So which underscores our interest in creating sort of an all-day, seven-day-a-week, maybe Saturday and Sunday won't be exactly as crowded or as frequent as Monday through Friday. But, but a bit more, you know, our Sunday frequencies are often far less frequent than even Saturdays and other days of the week. So we want to make a network that people can feel confident that, you know, they can use the transit service on weekends, that they don't need to go out and buy a car to do those errands, or that they don't have to go out and buy a second car to do those errands in their household. So that's the type of things that we're looking to do.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I just have a couple of comments, but before I do that, could I have a second for Mrs. Mahan's motion to receive? Thank you, Mr. Diggins. And thank you for the presentation tonight. One question I have, and I think it's great to have the Better Bus Project and you have a timeframe spelled out here. But what about needs or demands that you're going to identify in a shorter term? And what I'm thinking specifically is the Green Line is going to be extended to Tufts very soon. The 80 bus leaves Arlington Center goes right down Boston Avenue, Medford. That seems to me to be the type of corridor that is, once the Green Line opens to extends to Tufts, that there would be a lot of demand for particularly people from this area going to the North Station area, even to the airport. So how is this project being done with just other, in conjunction with looking at other needs of the system? And, and I'm hoping that where demand is going to come up through the Green Line extension, that, that it doesn't have to wait to go through this full process?
For sure. And especially if we're talking about implementation of the earliest items in fall of 2022. That's very close to the GLX's opening, you know, in early 22, at least to the Medford Tufts portion of the line. And, and if I could also add one bit of context, there had been some proposed changes to the MBT's bus services that had been recommended as part of the forging ahead process from last, last spring that I'm sure many are aware of. It was actually proposing elimination outright of the Route 80. Actually, that proposal, once we got the CARES Act II funding had been eliminated and any future decisions about what the 80 or maybe a shortened version of the Route 80 that wasn't duplicating so much of the Green Line Extension, any of those future discussions were sort of pushed to this process, the Bus Network redesign, to say, let's not just have a knee jerk reaction now that we have the CARES Act II funding so that we can be more deliberate, have a more inclusive public process and think about how best to connect areas to the Green Line Extension. So you don't have all the routes identified yet, but certainly we are aware of the Green Line Extension opening and will be recommending changes that can complement that Green Line Extension network. And just for other, and another example of integration is that there's a Silverline Extension process that's ongoing that we're also looking to integrate with. So we're, we're keeping an ear to the ground on a number of different transportation projects. And we're hoping that this will kind of be conscious of all those other changes.
No, that's great. Thank you. And this certainly is more optimistic than what we saw in the forging ahead presentations earlier. In fact, there's a big concern with a number of the changes that were proposed for Arlington. So I want to thank you for the presentation. Also, just want to add one final thing, not a question, just a comment. Good luck on access to the, to the Longwood Medical Area because that has been an issue for ages. Getting from Cambridge to Longwood without having to go downtown and out has always been a challenge. So best of luck with that. On a motion to receive from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim.
To her.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Hellmuth.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Delaney. And look forward to working with you and the T throughout the fall.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
My pleasure.
Sure. Okay. So I just want to have an announcement. I'm not doing as great as I had hoped on the agenda this evening for timing. So what, just for people who are watching, people who may be in the waiting room, we're going to take item five now. After item five, I'm going to ask if the board will take item 17 and 18 out of order. That's the welcome to Dr. Homan and the AHS Building Project. But right now, let's move on to the, to the Net Zero Action Plan. Item five, Ken Pruitt, Energy Manager and Jenny Wright, Director of Planning and Community Development. Good evening, Ms. Wright. Good evening, Mr. Pruitt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a PowerPoint presentation for this evening.
Great. And do we have that? Let me see. Yep. Here we go. Mr. Chatfield. Thank you.
Great. Well, I'm going to take a brief amount of time just to give you an introduction to the Arlington Net Zero Action Plan, which many of you, it sounds like, are very familiar with, based on the last conversation, which is very exciting. Love all the references to a clean future. So if you could go to the next slide. It's no secret that Arlington has a long history of greenhouse gas mitigation efforts through a variety of initiatives, plans, campaigns, et cetera. And the most recent of them actually originated with the Select Board. When in 2018, you authorized joining the Metro Mayor's Coalition and committed to Net Zero by 2050, which led to the creation of the Clean Energy Future Committee, which Diane Mahan now serves on and previously Dan Dunn had served on and helped us to lead into the development of the Net Zero Action Plan, which obviously we're here to talk about tonight. One important measure effort that relates to our mitigation efforts is the hiring of a Clean Energy Manager, which initially was, I believe, a regional energy manager. So it was somebody who covered multiple communities. But the great efforts that were happening in Arlington really required a full-time individual to do the work. And so the town invested in the creation of that full-time position. And of course, that is Ken Pruitt today. And the last of them are the, another more recent thing, aside from whatever happens tonight with the Net Zero Action Plan, is that recently the town filed a Home Rule petition to ramp up decarbonization in new and substantially rehabbed buildings related to the reduction of fossil fuels in those buildings. So I think that that's a really great example of the kind of effort that we're talking about. And, you know, I think with, with any plan, but particularly this one, this one requires three things. The first of them is will. It's going to take a very strong will in order to accomplish a lot of the goals in this plan. You'll see things in the plan that are obviously very centrally all about Arlington, but a number of other things relate to stronger will that go well beyond the town. And so that leads to the second item, which is advocacy. We're going to have a lot of advocacy efforts to leverage what we're doing here in Arlington, but to encourage it happening beyond. And then the next thing is partnerships. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. And the partnerships relate back to, in many ways, the Clean Energy Future Committee. And many of the people who serve on this committee, including the smiling faces on the screen, there are people who have relationships with many organizations in the community. Statewide organizations are working collaboratively with other municipalities, working with our legislative delegation. The list goes on in terms of leveraging the talent and the partnerships to make everything happen. And if you go to the next slide, that led to the pushing forward with the Net Zero Action Plan Project, which was funded by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and a town match of time and resources. We also received technical, technical support from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. And when we received the funding, it was actually to do two things. The first one is to, was to develop a Net Zero playbook, which essentially is this great compendium, an online, actually available online, that showcases the various types of best practices and ideas around Net Zero. The second part to it was to work with Arlington, NADIC and Melrose to develop these more specific and prescriptive plans into the future, which is what we did. And it started in June of 2019 and it was completed back in February. Next slide, please. So the Net Zero Action Plan had a lot of engagement despite the fact that most of it took place during the pandemic in the last year. We focused really as closely as we could on centering equity in this planning process. We also conducted a survey. We held a Net Zero Virtual Open House in November, which was a really interesting interactive process. And we made a lot of presentations along the way, which was not just talking to people, but talking with people about a lot of the ideas that ended up evolving and became the, the crux of this plan. So that included various groups in town as well as the, the traditional town bodies. Next slide, please. And so the plan itself has essentially four components. The first is really inspirational and sort of aspirational, I would say, and a little bit creative and fun. That's the letter from the future, which is how we hope it will be in the future, in 2050, of course. Then it's getting to Net Zero, which talks about the background of the plan and the overarching goals. The Net Zero Action Roadmap is really the, the meat of the planning document, which outlines 31 greenhouse gas mitigation measures that are based off of some really great data and research that we're planning to update on an ongoing, ongoing basis in the future. And then lastly, some very specific implementation tables that provide key details on all of the measures that are outlined in the roadmap. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ken, who is going to outline a little bit more about that foundational data component, as well as the plan itself. Thank you.
Thanks so much. What a great setup, Jenny, for where we've been and where we are now. And just a little bit more about that. First of all, it's a delight to be speaking to the Select Board tonight. So we, we did, and as part of this project, we completed a greenhouse gas inventory with data from calendar year 2017. So this represents greenhouse gas emissions in the year 2017 from Arlington. Total of 284,078 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. It really was most, you know, almost entirely carbon dioxide, but some methane, some nitrous oxide. And then all normalized back to a carbon dioxide equivalent that, that translates to a bit more than six tons of CO2 equivalent emissions in that one year from every single resident of Arlington. It's quite a bit of, quite a bit of greenhouse gases are emitted from a variety of sources. And I'll mention what they were. As you can see, on, on the left, stationary energy, which was almost 62% of greenhouse gas emissions in Arlington, refers almost exclusively to buildings, so heating and electricity for buildings. Whereas transportation is almost 36% of greenhouse gas emissions. You see this through, you know, the vast majority of Massachusetts communities, it's buildings and transportation that are emitting the greenhouse gases of note. On the right side, you can see a little bit of a further breakdown. Residential buildings account for the vast majority of greenhouse gas emissions with commercial and industrial quite a bit smaller. And then on transportation, it's almost, it's almost all passenger vehicles causing the transportation-related emissions. And that's, you know, mostly gasoline with some, with some diesel in there as well. We're going to update this inventory periodically. Fortunately, the tool that we developed, well, it was really MAPC that developed it with consultation with Arlington, NADIC and Melrose, is easy enough that we can actually update it ourselves in-house. We don't have to hire consultants each time we want to update our greenhouse gas inventory. So we want to do that at least once every five years. More frequent than that might make sense because there's some variation year to year emissions. But next slide, please. So the, the plan is broken down into three sections, and these are really essentially all greenhouse gas emissions from the town, coming from buildings, coming from mobility or transportation. And our energy supply is, is the third, which is primarily, primarily focused on electricity. But, but, well, I won't say primarily, it's, but it's focused on electricity and heating fuels. The goal of this plan is, is to get us on a path to Net Zero. There was discussion about whether the 31 measures in this plan by themselves would actually eliminate greenhouse gases by 2050. And the, the Clean Energy Future Committee is an amazing committee of terrific people with a tremendous amount of talent and insight. But we did the best we could, and it'll only get us so far because we will need new technologies. We'll need reductions in costs for certain technologies. We'll need new federal and state laws, really for any community to get to Net Zero. But I think Arlington is, is quite a bit out front with this plan and we are going to be well on our way to Net Zero by implementing these 31 measures. Next slide, please. So this, this slide is key. It gives the, a framework for understanding everything in the plan, essentially. Certain, there's essentially three pillars to reducing greenhouse gas emissions down to Net Zero. One is to maximize energy efficiency, especially of buildings, make them as insulated as possible, as airtight as possible, so that they don't need that much energy to, to be cooled and heated and for plug loads and lights. The next, the next pillar is to electrify everything. Director Wright mentioned the Home Rule petition that we have in front of the legislature at present to, where we're requesting the ability to restrict fossil fuel heating in new buildings and major construction. That goes back to this key pillar. We want all energy use in town to be through, through electricity. And the reason that's so important is we are steadily greening the grid. We will get to a point where all electricity is carbon free. It's almost 50% carbon free right now. And it is getting, that's increasing by 2% per year, based on the Next Generation Roadmap Bill signed into law by the governor in March. That's going to increase to 3% per year, starting in 2025. So our grid is greening in general for everyone in Massachusetts, but especially in Arlington, because we have Arlington Community Electricity. You see the acronym ACE there. Our local electricity program adds an additional 11% for everyone of renewable energy to the electricity supply for homeowners and businesses. And then on top of that, Arlington residents and small businesses can opt up to either 50% or even 100% clean electricity. Quick advertisement there. Go to aceace.ArlingtonMA.gov and it will take you less than five minutes to sign up to for 50 or 100% clean electricity. And again, the importance of electrifying everything and supplying that electricity. And again, the the importance of electrifying everything and supplying that electricity with clean electricity is is paramount. Okay. And so if you keep if you keep those three pillars in mind, essentially, any measure in the Net Zero Plan will make sense and fall into those categories. So next slide, please. I mentioned there are thirty one measures in the plan, mostly in buildings, followed by mobility, followed by energy. We paid so much attention to buildings because sixty two percent of our of our greenhouse gas emissions impact come from buildings, thirty six percent from transportation, and then our clean energy supply measures come in last, but even though they're few in number, they're critically important because we have to green our electricity supply. Next slide, please. And I believe this is actually the last slide. My apologies for there being so many words on the same slide, but you know, Director Rate mentions what it's going to take to implement the plan. And she mentioned, she mentioned will and advocacy and partnerships. And as we discussed within the CEFC finalizing this plan, that was actually the easy part. The hard part is implementing the plan. And so there there's no way we could undertake or even initiate thirty one measures in any given year. So the the Clean Energy Future Committee selected ten measures to initiate this year, leaving the remaining twenty one measures for subsequent years. Three of those measures at the top are for what we're calling the Electrify Arlington Campaign, which is a campaign and accompanying website and promotion of EVs. You won't be surprised to that we're talking about electrification as a measure to implement, given the importance of electrification in the Net Zero Plan itself, as I mentioned. The idea here is that this, the concept of electrification is new to most people. Even if it's not new, executing on it is fairly complex. So we want to have a website that's one-stop shopping with clear information for everyone who wants it, as well as in terms of the campaign, we want to train up local volunteers to have basic knowledge on electrification, and you can kind of act as a concierge for a homeowner who wants to understand the basics of what to do and get part of the way there before being handed off to a true expert or in fact an installer of heat pumps or solar that were that type of thing. Similarly, electric vehicles are here, they're here to stay, but they're still new to most people. So we want to have the really clear, good information and people who can help disseminate that information. So this is kind of similar to the Heat Smart Campaign that we ran in twenty nineteen, except much bigger, we hope, and over a long, longer time period. The fourth measure is to advocate for a net zero stretch energy code at the state level. It's something that that we're already doing. Fortunately, it was made part of the Next Generation Climate Roadmap Bill passed by the legislature that I mentioned earlier. And so that code is under development. We simply need advocates and municipalities simply need to make sure that it is truly a net zero code and not something watered down that doesn't doesn't get there. We decided to study the feasibility of commercial property assessed clean energy or CPACE, something that we're now doing within our within the Department of Planning and Community Development. It's essentially a finance financing mechanism for expensive energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades at at commercial properties. We decided to continue and expand participation in the Green Communities Program and similar programs. We're already, of course, a green community and participating in the Green Communities Program. But as the state takes more and more decisive action against climate change, we think and have already seen that there will be more and more grant programs available and technical assistance programs for communities that want to lead on climate as Arlington has for so long. The seventh measure is to support implementation of Connect Arlington. I think I think this board voted to endorse that plan at its last meeting. What's even much, much better than driving an electric vehicle is to make your trip by foot or bicycle or on mass transit. And so the the top mobility recommendation coming out of the Clean Energy Future Committee is to robustly support implementation of the Connect Arlington Sustainable Transportation Plan. The eighth measure was to adopt a zero emissions municipal fleet policy or plan as Ms. Mahan mentioned. And that is something that we are starting to look at. Other communities are looking at that. Some, some, some municipal fleet vehicles are easy to electrify. We've already done that with several. Others are harder, especially police cruisers that are running three shifts. There's no time to park them and charge them, for example. But I am pleased to say, as I think many of you know, that we will be adding two fully electric buses to the Arlington Public School Fleet over the next twelve months through a couple of grants that our department has won. And so two out of twelve will be electric and we'll, we're not not going to look back, going to keep heading in that direction, hopefully supported by grant funding. The ninth measure to advocate for improved utility rates for EV charging. This is kind of an esoteric measure that I'll basically just say the the electricity cost for charging electric vehicles rapidly through what's known as DC fast charging can be prohibitively expensive with ever sources current rates. And so we are advocating for those rates to be modified specifically for EV charging at that DC fast level. And finally, the a goal that we are starting to work on now is this goal of increasing the Arlington Community Electricity or ACE default rate of renewable electricity to a hundred percent by twenty thirty. So you wouldn't need to opt up to a hundred percent. You would be at a hundred percent automatically by twenty thirty. It's a challenge. We're looking at it. The town manager has been a real leader on the ACE program, and if anyone can help us figure it out, I'm sure he can. So these ten measures again are just the start. We're going to evaluate priorities annually. The CEFC will and decide which measures to continue, which we've essentially completed, which to delay. And then perhaps every five years, we'll look at the whole plan and decide if we essentially need a new plan, sort of a major upgrade. As I mentioned earlier, there will need to be changes in technology, changes in state and federal law, decrease in in cost of some of the technologies for Arlington to truly reach net zero. And I think we'll need to update the plan periodically to to capture those changes in laws and and technology and cost. And with that, why don't I stop and see if if you have questions?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. I'll start with the board with Mrs. Mahan.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And surprisingly enough, I'm really not going to have any questions only because I I do have the opportunity and benefit of sitting on the Clean Energy Future Committee with Ms. Ray and Mr. Pruitt and a whole bunch of other groups, mothers out front. And I do want to put a shout out for Daniel Lambstutz, who I'm always amazed by how much we work him. Every time we turn around, I mean, I think I see him not even joking at meetings in Zoom more than my husband, because he's in transportation, he's in the Clean Energy Futures Committee. He's at the Select Board Meeting. So with that, I will just make a motion to receive and leave it to my colleagues for any questions or follow-up they might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Chaplin?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, we we were hoping the board would consider a motion of endorsement tonight, like the Connect Arlington Plan. If Mrs. Mahan would be willing to consider.
No, move to endorse. I was just, I'm know what it is, that for me, when I see that someone's looking for something more than receipt, and it's been on previous wording, when it says for approval, that means you just don't want the receipt. Just not that anyone has to do that, but so no problem. Move to endorse.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Diggins?
I will happily second it. And 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 I am thrilled to see him on this rate and Mr. Pruitt here with us. You know, that surprised me. I have the same tone as I did with Ms. Delay because I was surprised, but I was expecting you to, but it's great to see you. And yeah, this is a, you packed a lot in the thirty pages. And so I'm really impressed and I like what I see and I read, and I feel as if the Select Board has its marching orders with respect to a lot of the stuff that can be done with buildings, you know. I think it's an opportunity for us to work with the ARB and to maybe get some zoning articles and some upcoming town meetings. So if not the Select Board, then certainly some people in town that I associate with, you know, in fact, yesterday at one of the the inner box meetings, you know. So if they're listening, so I think we have a lot to work with here and can accomplish some things. Respect to that letter in the beginning, I I liked it. And if I may predict, it to the governors from Arlington would be Cindy Freeman and maybe Sean Garberly or David Swanson, you know, just just putting that out there. And so the other, something else I might suggest that we think about is that there's this transportation climate initiative that the state, I am pretty sure is going to join. And that will perhaps give us some funding for some things that we can do in transportation. So that may be be some funds available to us, hopefully in the next year or two. So just want to put that out there. And also, I think we're going to discuss the leads on to the meetings, me, how we're going to meet potentially hybrid meetings. And so I'd like maybe someone to think about the how how energy is expended. We have our hypotheses or our thoughts about, I mean, what's more efficient, but it'd be good to have backed that up with something. So maybe calling on you, Mr. Pruitt, for some advice about that, or maybe someone that you can point us to for some insights about that. And and among the lines of things that maybe you'll do later. I thought CES four, the one about neighborhoods, neighborhood heat pumps was exciting. And what I like about that is that it gives another hook into community engagement, because I think one of the best ways to get people to do civic engagement is not to say you should do civic engagement because, well, it's a good thing to do, but have them kind of engage with each other, meaning almost clandestinely, we do the civic engagement thing. And I think that's a way that would benefit the environment and and the community. So so I'm I'm going to stop there and just end with, there was on page ten, there's a letter on page ten, another letter where it was almost as if it was written by me because a person talked about connected autonomous vehicles. I just want to say it wasn't me. But I really like that idea. I think it has a lot of potential. So want to work on that. So thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I echo my colleagues' appreciation to the Clean Energy Futures Committee and the Department of Planning, Community Development for this this outstanding work. It's a terrific report. And 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 thank you, Mr. Pruitt, for the shout out to to ACE. I'm going to do another one, ace. Arlington ma.gov. I have to say, when when my household signed up for the hundred percent renewable, it was really quick. It was really easy. It was also not nearly as expensive as I thought it would be. And I would encourage everybody to go take a look at that. Nothing you can do at ace. Arlington ma.gov is request a lot sign to share the word and the opportunity with your neighbors and help us get the word out about something that we all can do individually, or many of us can do individually to act locally and like to act individually, because that's clearly, as as Mr. Pruitt explained so well, a big part of the solution. So thank you again for this. One's right. These are our marching orders. Ms. Rate's right that this will require considerable will. I would add that it will also require foresight. It will require us to think long. And that's really hard to do when in as as a society and in in government, because there are so many short-term considerations and and things. But again, as I mentioned earlier, in the news right now, the UN's climate change experts are telling us the world is on fire. And you know, the pandemic has come and hit our intention, but the climate is still an emergency. This is the generational challenge, and I'm really excited at Arlington's leadership. And I'm excited to have this roadmap and these toolkits to do our part. And I especially excited to be part of a select board and of a town administration that is absolutely committed to doing that, to making some hard choices, making some long-term investments that are essential to our survival and to the world being the world that we want it to be for future generations. So so thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. And again, I echo my colleagues' comments, and thank you for the presentation. I also didn't see a news report today that said that climate change is actually more dangerous and catastrophic than previously thought, where as we knew that it was a catastrophic end. It's the thought that it's more dangerous than we knew is really scary and essentially the window to for action is closing. And so we're lucky to live in a municipality and state that recognizes this and has done really incredible efforts to fight climate change, but there's a lot of work to be done. And I think this plan addresses that, and I'm happy to endorse it.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And I'm also happy to endorse this plan with my colleagues. I want to thank you both for all the work that that you've done. And I do want to commend you as well, Mr. Pruitt, for the product placement. They may have to work in getting a banner across some of our presentations, but well said and placed in there very nicely. So I I thank you for that. With a motion to endorse by Mrs. Mahan and a second by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Good evening.
Okay, good evening and good night.
All right. So as I said earlier, I'd like to take items seventeen and eighteen out of order. Item seventeen is a welcome to Dr. Elizabeth Holman, the new superintendent of the Arlington Public Schools. And then we will follow that with the Arlington High School Building Project Presentation. Dr. Holman, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, sorry about the delay here in in getting to you.
No worries.
But I want I want to welcome you officially to Arlington. We had the pleasure of meeting at the reception at the Town Hall recently, and you started on July one, and we're really looking forward to to your leadership with the with the schools and and working with you going forward. So if you have a few words to say, and I guess before I turn it over to you, what better person to hit the ground running than someone who's completed multiple marathons across the country? So thank you for for being here with us tonight, and best of luck in your new position of superintendent.
Thank you. Yes, I'm not doing a whole lot of marathoning right these days, but yes, we have certainly hit the ground running in the school district. I have been in the now officially for a month and about seven days. And we've been very busy. We're planning for the fall return and making sure that all of our students get back to school safe. And I'm very much looking forward this week to having some updates for families on what that might look like. I will say I've been receiving such a warm welcome in Arlington, and it's been very clear to me since I got here that I am now working in a very innovative and progressive community, as evidenced by the presentation we just saw and the one that we're about to see. And that's really exciting for me, and it's obviously also a community that's very dedicated to education. I've had the opportunity to meet with families in several listening sessions this summer already, with staff in some listening sessions and the next part, which I'm probably the most excited about, is getting into some classrooms and meeting all of the kids. So that will be my focus for the first month or so of school. Is getting out into our schools and into the classrooms with principals and other leaders to see what's going on in instruction. I have an entry plan that is very focused on doing a lot of listening over the next few months. I will report to the school committee on the findings of that entry plan in January. And I'm really looking forward to the start of the school year and getting all of our kids back into school full-time, in person as safely as possible. That's really what we're sort of laser focused on right now. It's been very nice to meet most of you. I've had the opportunity to meet most of you, and if I haven't yet, we have something on the books. most of you. I've had the opportunity to meet most of you. And if I haven't yet, we have something on the books. And I'm very happy to be here in Arlington. It's clearly an excellent fit for me and my values. And it's been wonderful to be meeting folks and collaborating with our incredibly intelligent teams, both on the school side and on the town side.
Great. Thank you very much. I just turn it to the board for any brief comments, Mr. Helmut.
It was great to meet you at the reception. Really glad to have you. And thank you again for coming to Arlington.
Thank you.
Mr. Biggins.
Thank you, Chair. And I wasn't able to get to the reception, but you were nice enough to meet me for coffee last last Tuesday morning, and it was a really good conversation. And I am still buzzing for the fact that you are more you see more potential in your civic engagement than I do, you know. And so I'm very hopeful about it, but I tend to be pragmatic about these things. At least I think I am. But but you see more potential there, and that just drives me to want to do it more. So thank you for being our superintendent and being a part of Arlington.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Biggins. Mr. Heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Holman. I also got an opportunity to meet you at the reception, and it was great to get to talk to you for a little bit. I have, as I mentioned to you, a incoming first grader and third grader at Downland. So we're good memory. So we're excited. And you know, like I said, we've been really thankful and appreciative to all the efforts so far from Arlington Public School System in a really trying time. And I did enjoy talking with you and hearing some of your ideas and your energy for the job. So I look forward to it. It's going to be a difficult first few years, which you know, but I certainly think you're up to the task and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mrs. Mahan.
Hello, Dr. Holman, or when we meet Liz, always have a hello correspondence. Call me Liz, call me Liz. But you definitely have the credentials and education that Arlington is so grateful for. And I look forward to talk to you about just because you're a captive audience, perhaps two, three years down the road. And the only one time we pulled it off, I believe Mr. Philman may have been on the school committee. I can't remember. Is it I'd like to both committees and boards think about in like twenty three, twenty four, putting aside anytime we have a debt exclusion or override, maybe once a year, maybe once every two years, we have some sort of meeting or whatever is a good word to call it. Because one of the things that I've seen in the town is there's a town side and a school side, and I'd like to see that mesh more. I'm not looking for a new word that we all fall under. But I think if that would be helpful to me. And then the other thing I would say, just as a word of advice, but you certainly have the endurance and the expertise, the credentials. Whether any decision, big or small, I would say something you already know, you have a great resource with your school committee and its members. I know if you don't know it, you're going to do your homework and due diligence and check it one more time again. And I would just say, once you make that decision, not that you ever would, but what's always been successful to me is, yes, you keep an open mind, but you see that decision out. And you know, you can kind of tweak it along the way. So I'm really excited that you're here. I'm super stoked, except for we didn't get to see Fasco. That's the next phase. The tours that that were offered. And I know we're going to talk that in the next agenda item. So welcome to Arlington. I look so forward to working with you, working for you. I'm here as a resource. And hopefully see you soon in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Okay, and I'm going to move right on to item eighteen, which is the AHS Building Project Presentation to be led by Jeff Thielman, the Chair of the HS Building Committee. Just before I turn it over to you, Jeff, I do want to thank you for setting up the tour. But four out of four of us got to see the new high school last weekend. It's very exciting. And you know, we'll have some comments on it after that. But I want to turn the floor over you and really look forward to the presentation tonight.
Thanks very much, Steve. Thanks to the board for inviting the building committee to tonight's presentation. As I you already heard, you were here with Dr. Holman, Jim Burrows from Skanska is here, Lori Coles from HMFH Architectural Firm, Jim Burrows represents the owner's project manager. We have a slide presentation. I'm going to run through it. I want to thank all of you, or four of you, for taking the time to visit the high school. We are very proud of what we're building with the money of the taxpayers. And we'll make it available to other people. And Mr. Biggins, if you want to visit, just email me. And we'll we'll make that we'll make a visit happen with Jim Burrows and the staff. So I hope you all had a great tour. I heard good things about it. I heard several other people and the town leadership were there. So let's get to it. The building committee, I guess if you go to the next slide, there you go. The building committee is pleased to report that the project is on budget and basically on schedule. The total cost is two hundred eighty nine point eight million dollars with approximately eighty four point six million coming from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or the MSBA. The school is designed, as all of you know, for seventeen hundred and fifty five students, but it can serve more than that if necessary. I want to make a special note about the current grant amount from the MSBA. After the town locked in lower construction costs from strong bids, the MSBA lowered its grant accordingly. The MSBA also made adjustments based on some design changes that we approved as a committee. And the grant is reduced by one point about one point four million dollars. Our bid savings are about a half a million dollars for an overall town cost increase of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And this could be lower if we don't need to spend all of the project budget. So let's go to the next slide. We have many partners in the project, some of whom are here tonight, HMFH Architects, Skanska, the MSBA, and then our contractor, Consigli Construction. As you can see from the this next slide, the process started in twenty sixteen, and it will continue until the building is completed in twenty twenty four with final site work, including fields and lights scheduled for the spring of twenty twenty five. The opening of Phase One, which is the Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, Mathematics Wing, the wing you all walked through last week, and the Performing Arts Wings will be right after the February break of twenty twenty two, which is not that far away, with the auditorium being ready for students in early April of twenty twenty two. The next slide, please. The detailed design phase of the project began in twenty nineteen. And during this phase, the building committee with guidance from the design team refined and finalized the building and site design. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the the final design of the Mass Ave entrance. And if you go to the next line, slide, you'll see the final design of the athletic field entrance behind the school. And the next slide, I just want to touch on value engineering. We are very mindful as a committee. We have a diverse committee of people many different perspectives from all over the community and from town government. We are charged with doing value engineering throughout the project. And you know, always looking for ways to save the taxpayers, both state taxpayers and local taxpayers money. As part of the design process, multiple estimates were performed and compared to the budget. Value engineering is the process of making modifications to the original design in order to meet the budget while maintaining our educational goals and priorities. At various points in time, items were removed from the project. And later, when some bids came back lower than anticipated, we were able to add some items back. At the next slide, this gives you an overview of our value engineering work. Several items, the artificial turf lighting, the Minuteman Bike Way ramp, and the Millbrook Drive traffic light remain in the project. Additionally, in response to COVID nineteen, the building committee voted to add HVAC ventilation and air filtration improvements. And finally, we made the decision to remove the ramp connecting Mass Ave to the athletic fields. And we modified some interior and exterior facilities. And in the next slide, I won't in the interest of time, I'm not going to go into the details, but I think all of you on the select board know that we renovated the Parmenter School as part of this project in order to accommodate the Monotomy Preschool during construction. And the result, when the middle of Monotomy, Monotomy Preschool moves back into the high school, will be a building that can be used, can be leased to others and bring in revenue for the town. The next slide, you'll get a sense of the Parmenter Project. And then the next slide, you'll see the entrance of the Parmenter. Go to the next slide. I do want to, this has been raised in many public meetings and many public conversations with people, our contractors and subcontractors. Contractors have carefully followed COVID nineteen protocols since March of twenty twenty. There are numerous safety measures in place. The construction crew takes this very seriously. The men and women on the job are have safety checks every day and have been very careful. And we've had a good track record there. As you can see in the next slide, you're going to get an October, this is October of twenty twenty, before we began work, not that long ago, when you think of how quickly we're moving, not that long ago, that's an aerial view of the school. And then if you go to the next slide, if you look closely in November, you'll see a white, we put up the first, what we call the first beam. You'll see a white steel beam with the letters AHS on it. This beam was the first steel raised, and it was it was an exciting, it was a rainy day, but it was an exciting day in November to be out there with the construction crew. The whole crew was just excited to get the project going. And some of us in the building committee were there as well. And the next slide, you'll see that in December of twenty twenty, the town of Arlington and our construction management firm Consigli Construction signed a guaranteed maximum price or GMP agreement that sets the maximum price that the town will have to pay for the project regardless of the actual costs incurred. The combination of a competitive bidding process and pandemic related changes in the economy in twenty twenty resulted in approximately one million dollars in savings. If you look at the next slide, you'll see that we're exceeding our original sustainability estimates. The sustainability features of the new school support a longstanding commitment to reduce energy use across all town facilities and operations. That kind of aligns with the conversation we heard earlier. And we're on track to achieve LEED gold, that's Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design LEED gold status. And the next slide is planned, there will be four phases of construction in order to build the school on the existing site. And the phasing minimizes disruption of student learning and eliminates the need for modular classrooms. The project has been designed to accommodate the school and operation. We have precautions in place to keep staff and students safe and away from the construction area. The working relationship, I can attest this after many, many meetings with our construction leadership and school officials. The working relationship between Dr. Janger, his staff, and the project team has been excellent. There is a monthly indoor quality assessment done as well as regular desk monitoring reports. I want to note that the return to students at the end of last year, at the end of the twenty 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 one school year was executed very successfully. And we are ready for the safe return of students to school in just four weeks. The next slide, you'll see the four phases of the project in more detail. As I mentioned earlier, Phase One will extend to February of twenty twenty two. And let me move to the next slide. This is a view of the of the current look at the front entrance of the school compared to the finished design. So you see that coming together. And the next slide is a view of the entrance to the Performing Arts Wing. And then the next slide is a picture of our auditorium, which will be spectacular. And the next slide has another view. I think it has another view of the auditorium. Yes, it does. And the next slide has a look at the interior of one of our classrooms. And the next slide is a view of the progress that we're making in the steam wing. And the next slide, oh, I'm sorry, this this is, yeah, the next slide. And that that's a view of of the light well. And then the next slide is an aerial view of the project in from last month. So the final slide lists the members, there's another view of the project, list the members of the building committee. I do want to say that, you know, for the past since twenty fifteen, since we started this conversation, we were led by Dr. Kathleen Bodie, who retired on June thirtieth. We're grateful to she and Dr. Holman are still in touch, talking as needed. But Kathy Bodie was instrumental in getting this project to this point and a huge part of our effort and a big part of our committee. But there you can see the members of the committee. The committee has been working closely together since the end of twenty sixteen. It's almost five years together. We know each other well. We trust one another. And I think we've made some very good decisions on behalf of the community. I'm going to close by inviting the public to visit our website, sign up for weekly construction updates and follow us on video and Facebook. We believe that this new school rising in the middle of our community will give everyone in Arlington or is giving everyone in Arlington hope for a better and a brighter future. So we thank you for listening. Mr. De Corsi said to keep it as brief as possible. I tried to do that. That gives you a brief overview where we're at. And Lori, Jim, Adam is on the committee as well. All of us can take any questions that you might have about the project.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Phil. When you went above and beyond, that's
I, you know, I got, you know, I got a timeline. I got the I got the memo. Instructions from the chair.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. So I want to turn it over to board members for for questions and comments. And I will start with Mrs. Mahan.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get your memo, but I will start try to be brief. Thank you, my colleague, Mr. Thielman, Jeff arranging those tours of the high school. I was itching like crazy to get in there. I have been down on the sidewalk, haven't gotten further in. Know a few people have a relative that's working on the site, but you know, I waited my turn. And I just want to say, I am so impressed when we toured the building. You know, everybody comes into the building looking different ways. First of all, the hole, I was there for fifty six minutes. I wish I could stay longer, but I saw literally one nail, and it was next to a box. I saw all the rooms swept nice and clean. I saw on every floor, I asked, because I didn't see it initially, but once someone from Consiglio or whoever it was, I apologize, pointed out where the fire hazmat stations were for the workers. And there's three on every floor. I saw only one piece of craft equipment that actually had a padlock and a chain on it. And there's been no craft theft. And I say that because when you bring together doing a project like that, because I come from those roots. You know, everyone in the construction industry knows about recent Worcester project. And it's those things when you're talking about worker safety. When you you're talking about what you're going to get in the end as a finished project as well as I could tell that and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but when I asked him about, you have safety meetings, when are they there in the morning? And then when I noted that the rooms that they're using for temporary storage, I could tell that the materials were placed with a craft order in mind, meaning the worst thing to me, a not organized project and not being done well. So you can have those cost savings and you can get the finished project you want, is you go in and you see, you know, the blueboard or certain piping. It's way over in the back. And if when I went into the two storage places that had all the materials, I could tell what they were working on at the time, because literally the piles, you're like, okay, that's all the stuff that's at the end of this. So I definitely was impressed with that. Saw on every piece of steel I looked at, and I looked at a lot. There were calculations on there in pencil. Again, it's a testament to the projects. People always ask, they compare it to other school projects. And in terms of materials in COVID nineteen, there was only one particular equipment that has been delayed for COVID, but we only have to wait three months out. I know construction sites that are waiting twelve to fifteen months, because it's such, which again tells me that they're in contact with the industry. And the other thing, just from my early days with chalk lines being done manually, because everyone always asks about the high school and, you know, how it's done. It's laser now. So you're going to get that a hundred percent right. And then the only thing that I just noted, and I know Lori and everybody was on top of it. But when we went into the arc space, I just saw plumbing for two sinks at the same height. And I heard most of Lori said, but in a big place like that, and not all my hearing on the left. I I know she told me there's another sink coming in. I think you said it was a trot sink. And then that's where so we'd have four sinks and we wouldn't have a handicap. If you could just answer that question, because I just, I didn't want to make you keep repeating it.
Yeah, Lori, go ahead. Diane, let me just say, no one has given that detailed of an analysis of the building. Nobody has. It's gone through the place. No one, not. It's gone through the place, no one, not one elected appointed official in the town.
Half of it, half of it, I'm not doing.
I do, before Lori comments, I just want to say that I do wanna, I do wanna recognize the members of the building committee that have been very careful. In reviewing all the construction bids coming in for safety, so Frank Callahan from the Building Trades Association is on our, on our committee. Judson Pierce, who is a workman's compensation attorney, both of those fellows have gone through a lot of the bids and we've actually said notice on bids because of their track record. So we've been very, very focused on safety and COVID safety as well. Lori, you can answer that.
Hi, thank you all. So yes, every, every room that has a sink has an accessible sink. And in the case of the art rooms, not only do we have the sinks on the perimeter that you saw, we have, and we are calling them trough sinks, it's not a very elegant word, but, but basically. Very deep sinks that the students can actually stand on, on two different sides, so there are multiple, multiple faucets just to get. You know, at the end of the, end of the class period, when a whole bunch of kids need to get to sinks, it gives that many more access points to water to clean up, so.
Okay, thank you, it's just me going in every room and I see the plumbing, I see the HVAC scene done, I see the sprinkler and everything and I just, I didn't see. Like if I saw the pipes for that other one, so I just wanted to be a stickler and I just want to make sure everybody knows, like, all members of the board or the school committee would definitely pay attention to everything, because we appreciate the work that's being done and how it's being done, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The building is fully accessible, 100%.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the presentation and all the work that you've done. I don't know if you knew, knew how much work you were undertaking when you took on the chair of the building committee, but certainly we appreciate all the efforts that you have there. And thank you for arranging the tours. I, the only thing I can say about the tour is just how impressed I was at the workmanship, the progress. I had it given how short a time ago was that we just saw the framing up, I expected to go in and see studs and we went in, there were rooms that they had started painting. So there's certainly a lot of progress being made in the layout, just makes sense. And particularly the arts area, the, the auditorium, all the performance, the even down to the individual. Practice rooms where students can go in and practice their instruments themselves, to the chorus room and the band room, it's just, it was very impressive. And it's certainly exciting to have kids that will go through the system and eventually end up at Arlington High School and. And the, all the facilities that they're gonna have at their disposal is really exciting for the town, and so thank you all for all your efforts.
Great point, John, yeah, and I just want to say, I don't think people in the community or students realize yet how much bigger all the art labs are, the science labs, all those rooms, it's transformational. Not just from a physical perspective, but from an educational perspective, it will, it will transform the way we deliver education in that, in that school.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Heard, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, are you expecting a motion of some sort for this?
No, we just, well, we can receive the report, if you want to make a motion to receive, that's fine, but this was a, an informational presentation that we thought we're at a, a good point in the project to, to hear from the committee tonight.
Right, well, if we don't need a motion, then we can save a vote and save a little time. It also, you know, sometimes there's an inverse relationship between how much I say and the degree to which I'm impressed, meaning this is gonna be one of them, Mr. Fieldman. And I would expect no less from you and the building committee and the school committee, past and present, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you, it's very nice of you to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, once again, I think every presentation I've seen you make on this has been concise, compelling. And just really clearly communicated what a great value taxpayers are getting for, for their money. My tour of the, of the school just reinforced that, the quality of it, the incredible impressive progress. And, and most of all, that this is on schedule and on budget, given the huge disruptions from, in the supply chain and everything else. From the, from the pandemic just blows my mind in a, in a very good kind of way, and I think it just speaks to the quality of the leadership. From you, the committee, the entire project team, and, you know, I just, I just couldn't be happier with that. The space itself really is transformative, that, that's the word that came to my mind. The natural light pervades everywhere, which will provide human experience, but also save on lighting, and, and there's so much thought put into this. Some of the, I can't wait for the public to see some of the, the discourse lab, the spaces, the, the interactive spaces for students outside the classroom to, to do small group work. I was, of course, overjoyed to see the size of the performing arts spaces, because that, that rectifies one of the great injustices of the old building. And something that's near to my heart, but it's just all of that and more in spades. And, you know, I think this is gonna be a great resource for our students, for the communities, and, and just kudos for that, and, and thanks again for the, for the tours and for coming to us tonight.
Thank you, Eric, those are kind words, thanks very much, and we have, we have a great design team, the Scanska HMH, HMPH Consigli combination is pure gold, they do great work, so we're lucky.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, yeah, and I want to, Ms. Coles and Mr. Burrows are here tonight, I want to thank you both for the tours, they accompanied us and. Our, our day was, and we didn't have the detailed questions, maybe that Mrs. Mahan had, but you answered every question and I really appreciate it, and I think. People are really going to be surprised at how much natural light there is in the building, and even, even with the, all the windows not put in and. All the light wells not open, it, it's amazing how much thought got put into that and, and what a great learning environment is going to be created. And I do also want to mention that the D Lab space, which really looks phenomenal, it's gonna be a highlight and. It's a school building, but I'm hoping that we can have some community programs in, in that D Lab as well to, to show it off to the community, so. I want to thank you for, for bringing us through, Jeff, for, for reaching out to us and, and accommodating our requests for the, for the tours, because it really. Made a difference, really made us so proud to see what is coming on that site and what's ahead of us as a community and for our students.
Thank you, and I just want to add one thing, I, I want to recognize, I'm on, you know, we have a great committee. There's our communications subcommittee led by Amy Spear, who I think might be watching tonight, who helped out with the presentation, by the way, nice of Eric to say good things about my presentations, I have Amy doing a lot of, she's really the brains behind this thing. But our website and the transparency on the website, the communication on the website, really is an example, and we get emails and calls from people all over the state that want to replicate our, our website, so. And even, even Dr. Holman said, you know, when you came on board, that this was a website to be emulated, so. When you're speaking to the constituents, all our constituents in Arlington, tell them to get on the website, get the information they need, ask questions, we'll get back to them. We are very proud of the project, we're gonna keep, it's been an interactive dialogue with the community over the past five years, that's gonna continue. We are starting to talk about how do we get town meeting members, we've gotten the leadership of this, we have the select board, we've got leadership of the town committees. School committee's been in there, the building committee, we're trying to figure out a way to organize tours for, for town meeting members. And we'll, so just stay tuned, we'll get that, we'll get that organized later in the, in the year. So, we thank you, also want to thank Adam Chaplin, he's been dynamite, and Sandy on the finance committee, keeping us honest and focused. So we have a great group leading this project and we are grateful for your support.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Fieldman, and keep up the great work, and we're really looking forward to the first part of the first phase opening in, in February. With the steam wing and performing arts later in the academic year, so thank you all for being with us tonight, sorry we're a little late getting to you, but we appreciate the presentation.
Our pleasure, all right, my friends, thanks so much, thanks for all your good work, everybody, keep up the good work, you take care.
Okay, you too, thank you. Okay, so moving back to item six for approval, annual dock permit review, Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make this extremely brief, these are your regulations for something that doesn't affect a lot of people, but they're basically to approve. Floating docks in places like Spypon and the Mystic Lakes. There's only two changes that I'm asking the board make, one is that explicitly authorize the conservation planner, who's currently Emily Sullivan. To be your designate to administer this program, and secondly, I think this is a, a gimme, but I just want to make sure, but back to the board is that we would change Board of Selectmen, which is currently reflected in the policy, the select board, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Heim, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, move approval.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
I will second Mr. Helmut's motion and ask for a friendly amendment that we appoint Emily Sullivan as a designate, is that okay?
That, that's fine, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Heard.
No questions.
Okay, and Mr. Diggins.
No questions.
Okay, and I don't have any questions either, so on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Thank you, folks, unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, before we go to the next, would it, members like a five minute break at this point, or, okay, why don't we do that, I think we can get on, get back on, on, on track when we come back, but why don't we take a five minute break? It's 9:38, we'll be back at 9:43. Okay, great, okay, well, welcome back to the second half of the select board meeting this evening. We are now moving on to the consent agenda, and this will be items seven through 11, unless that item 12 be removed from the consent agenda. Item seven, minutes of meeting, June 21, 2021. Item eight for approval, Boston Women's Market at Uncle Sam Plaza, Saturday, September 11, 2021, 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. Item nine, reappointments, all terms to expire June 30, 2024, Council on Aging Anne Brown, Disability Commission Michael Rodamacher. Item 10 for approval, annual Walter V. Moynihan Town Day Run, September 18, 2021, Joseph Connolly, Director of Recreation. Item 11, request for a special one day beer and wine license, September 11, 2021, at Robbins Memorial Town Hall. For a private event, Amy Keating and Brian Silva. On the consent agenda, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, Mrs. Mahan.
Second, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Heard.
No comments.
Mr. Diggins.
No comments.
Thank you, so a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Appointments, items 13 and 14, item 13, appointments to the Community Preservation Act Committee, we'll take these one at a time. Alexander Franzosa, term to expire June 30, 2023, Susan Doctorow and David Swanson, for terms to expire on June 30, 2024. These are first time appointments, I don't know if any of the individuals are with us tonight, I believe Mr. Franzosa is.
I believe all three are, and Mr. Franzos is joining us right now.
Okay, great, so why don't we start with Mr. Franzosa, and first of all, thank you for your willingness to serve the community, if you could just tell us a little bit about your interest in serving on the, the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Sure thing, thank you all for having me on this forum tonight. My interest in serving on the Community Preservation Act Committee comes from my interest in serving my town, I've been a lifelong resident of Arlington. And I love living here, I plan on living here for quite some time, I ran for town meeting this past year. And I won and I enjoyed my time serving during town meeting, and I've been looking for ways to serve in the meantime. The Community Preservation Act Committee, to me, would be an excellent way to serve my town. When I ran for town meeting, I promised the constituents that I would support the interests of our town's infrastructure, preservation of historic buildings. And affordable housing, and when I found that this committee would be serving in all those capacities, I was very enthused and submitted an application and. I'd be honored to serve on this committee.
Great, thank you very much, I'll turn it to board members, why don't we go one at a time, Mr. Chaplin, and then if we have, for, for questions anyway, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, thank you, Alexander, it was great to meet you at the interview, thanks for your willingness to serve and, you know, I was really taken with your, your true passion for service in local government, I think that's, that's wonderful for someone in the age, but particularly. Someone just starting out in the career, it's exemplary, so, so we appreciate that. And, and I'll just say this kind of respect with, respect to all, all the applicants, I think a lot of you know that the CPA committee is near and dear to my heart, it was my previous gig before I got this new one. And it is unique, it is, it's wonderful, because there's a dedicated funding stream to do things that wouldn't get done, because they're never a short term priority, but they're really long, long term priorities, so. I'm thrilled with, with the quality of all the applicants that we received and the appointments that we are, I hope make tonight. And I think that it leaves the committee with fresh ideas, fresh, fresh blood and some good hard workers for, for the task of sorting through all the different possibilities and opportunities that we have. So, so thanks to you and to the others for your, for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Franzosa, and also to Mr. Doctor, Mr. Swanson, who I have worked on endeavors with in the past, and I look forward to working with Mr. Franzosa. One thing I will say is, I, I'm really excited by your energy and your commitment and, and definitely your follow through, as well as with Sue and David. Just because I have you here, what I would say moving forward, to continue on what my colleague, Mr. Helmut and a former colleague, Ms. Clarissa Rowe. Which is CPA, as you know, as all of you know, is not a standalone, it's usually in partnership with CDBG, with Arlington Housing Authority, with the Historical Society. And one of the things I've found on CDBG is. We have a good framework in there in terms of making sure, you know, if we need to buy four pies. Not only working together to get the funding, but having that communication back and forth, so that we don't, not saying this has been done, but there was one particular item, I think it was last year. And it had nothing to do with CPA, but the request went into three different ways to be funded, and it was funded all three different ways. And it was only about a $51,000 request, but my thing is where everything. Every project is important, you know, whether it's, has two zeros or five zeros, four zeros. I, I want to make sure I do and everybody else does a better job with that, as well as, I know Mr. Helmut and Ms. Rowe. Have a good relationship with Arlington Housing Authority, but similar to Mr. Franzosa and Ms. Doctorow, Mr. Swanson coming. There are some new people over there, Fiorella Badilla, who we appointed tonight. We have an acting executive director, so whatever outreach you can do with that, because. I know during COVID-19, I felt a little frustrated, because I want to spend all the funding that we should, that we raise and can do. But we couldn't do that, because it's COVID-19, so, but I want to make sure that we'll always be dealing with COVID, so that's not going anywhere, just hopefully. People take care of themselves, but moving forward, you know, the monies are there, I'm not saying spend it down every year, but. And I know you guys are gonna have the energy and commitment and knowledge, having town meeting and other committees with, with you, so sorry for that lengthy pitch, and welcome, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heard.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Franzosa for stepping up to serve. I know I owe you an email back to meet up at some point, hopefully in the early fall. But again, just echoing the comments, you know, this is such an important committee, and it, like Mr. Helmut says, CPA can fund. Projects that otherwise don't get funding, such as the gutters, the Jason House, Russell House, or renovating. The town hall gardens and the fountain, which with all our expenses that we have, it's hard to, to fit those into a. the town hall gardens and the fountain, which with all our expenses that we have, it's hard to, to fit those into a budget. So you do important work and I appreciate your enthusiasm and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Mr. Diggins?
Yes, I'm Mr. Franzosa, really happy to have you join the CPAC. I'm partial to people with a science background. And also, I know I talk about youth engagement and it's not so much that I have an infatuation with youth as much as it is that the, the, the policies that we make be our policies that young people are going to have to live with a lot longer than we will be. And so it's really important to have you have a voice in that. And so I am thrilled that you are a member of town meeting in addition to wanting to be a part of CPAC. So, thank you.
Great, thank, thank you, Mr. Diggins. And yeah, I also want to echo the, the comments of my colleagues. First of all, congratulations on your election to precinct twelve, an uneasy precinct to, to an election. And so it's very impressive. And, and for your interest in serving on this committee. What I think I will do, we had questions for Mr. Franzosa. His, he's got a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Why don't we bring Ms. Doctorow and Mr. Swanson on together now and then we'll have one vote for, for all three individuals.
Mr. De Corsi, may?
Yes.
A, a, as long as no member has an objection to, to pooling the votes. If that's okay with.
Yeah, is there any objection to that? From, okay, when we get there, thank you for that, Attorney Heim. We will we'll bear that in mind. Good evening, Ms. Doctorow.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for, for your interest in serving on the Community Preservation Act Committee and why don't you tell us a little bit about your interest and see if there's any questions from the board?
Sure, and you're most welcome. Happy to be here. Yeah, I became interested in this opportunity, not because of any specific expertise that I have in the three areas of interest because I'm really not an expert in these areas, but I greatly value all of them. I became interested more because of my enthusiasm for the CPA projects that have already been funded and how they touch our lives in town because they really do. And I had a lot more specific details in my letter, so I won't repeat those here in the interest of brevity. But I've lived here almost eighteen years and I've been involved in several town and community volunteer activities, including as a town meeting member. And I think that gives me a good feel for the, what the work on the committee, committee would be like. And also who to approach for advice and feedback in these areas of expertise that I'm supposed to be learning about. And actually, I think this speaks to the outreach and cooperation that Ms. Mahan alluded to earlier. So really, I'd be very honored to be part of the CPAC and I am grateful for your appreciation. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doctorow, and good evening, Mr. Swanson. Thank you for your interest and if you could just let the board know your specific interest in the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the board. My name's Dave Swanson. Very excited at the opportunity to join CPAC. I guess I would highlight maybe three, three things either about me and about my interest in CPAC. I think first and foremost, you heard it from Sue and from Alex, it's just passion for public service and, and an interest in, in preserving, I, I think the character of Arlington, right? I've had the opportunity to serve on town meeting for the past four years to see Eric Helmut and team give wonderful presentations about the activities of CPAC, about the projects that they're engaged in locally. And, and frankly, many of those projects, my family and I enjoy on a monthly, monthly, weekly basis. And so the mission of CPAC is something I'm absolutely behind and very enthusiastic about. And it's what I think first drew me to this particular opportunity. I'd say, secondly, I perhaps bring a, a, a unique professional background to the role. I I'm a lawyer by education and training. I serve as Chief of Staff and General Counsel to our state senator, so I have a, a level of familiarity with the, the state's authorizing act, the Community Preservation Act. The, the debate that takes place around, you know, the continual funding need or increase in funding around the Community Preservation Act Trust Fund. And, and you know, I hopefully can bring that, that body of knowledge to CPAC. And I guess the third thing I would highlight is that it'd be my hope to sort of hit the ground running. This wouldn't be my first local volunteerism endeavor. I, I served on the Arlington Human Rights Commission before. When I lived in Newton, I served on the Newton Economic Development Commission. And so I do have a level of familiarity with how commissions and town committees fit within the larger town governance, how they fit within the interaction between town and, and state governance. And look forward to, to, to volunteering and, and working within that, that structure. And, and like Sue mentioned, and I think to, to Ms. Mahon's point, look forward to collaborating with, with the, the, the very clear intersections that the CPAC has with other, with other town bodies. So I'm very excited for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson, and I will go in the same order with the board, starting with our former CPAC member, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. So, so as to Ms. Doctorow's comments about not having a particular expertise in the CPA areas, neither did I. And they ended up here, so watch out.
That's the only reason I was brave enough to say that.
But ser-, but seriously though, I, I think Ms. Mahan really hit on it, that, that the key of being effective in this committee, in this committee is the collaboration, the understanding how things get done, collaborative work within the committee with other elements of town. Because CPA doesn't have that much money any one given year, but it's really powerful as, as leveraged funds and partnership with other, with other entities. So I think, you know, that you, but you and Dave both have, have that depth of experience and understanding how it works in town meeting. I think that you'll, you'll bring, both that will bring that. And, and Dave, yes, we, we did, we did think about your day job. And, and with gratitude, because the state legislative leadership does have a lot to do with the success of the program. So, so thank you both for, for stepping up.
Great, thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan?
I will gladly second Mr. Helmut's motion and I did all my speak at the beginning because it was basically to all three. But I definitely appreciate both Sue and Dave, along with Alex, taking this on and agree with my colleague, Mr. Helmut, that all of you are definitely qualified and will the town will benefit from your service again. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurt?
Again, just thank you both for your willingness to serve. You're all familiar faces and so we have the full faith that you'll be able to step right into this role and be effective members from the first day. So thank you for your willingness to continue to serve the town of Arlington.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Mr. Diggins?
And Ms. Doctorow, the, I'm partial to you because you used to be on TAC. And we all know how important TAC is. But more so, I mean, when I first became a town meeting member and came to the envisioned Arlington Standing Committee to start working on the precinct meetings, you and Elizabeth Carr Jones, along with Julie Brazil, were very supportive and encouraging and, 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 and very warm and welcoming. And I always tell people, well, you've heard me say repeatedly how warm and welcoming Arlington has been, meaning it's supportive. And you are one of the, one of those, one of those people. I mean, and then to look at your resume, I mean, I mean, I knew some of it, but I didn't know as much of it as there. I mean, you're, you're truly impressive, you know. And, and so, so gentle on top of that, you know, so, so, so thanks for your willingness to do this. And Mr. Swanson, the, as I said, potentially a governor. But, but also, I mean, you know, the one thing that you learn in politics, you know, is that you never know when you're going to be on the other side of the table. And so, so Mrs. Swanson is here, you know, before us, be to be approved to be on the, on CPAC, but I've been in communication with him, tried to arrange a meeting with him and/or sort of the Friedman to, to work with the group that is trying to get a regional I'm sorry, a real estate transfer fee. And that's happened with the Boston PO and members of the Senate. So, so, you know, we're all just one, we, group of people who have various roles at various times, just working together to try to make this place better. And, and you three will be a part of that, you know, community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. And I, I also want to thank you both, in addition to Mr. Franzosa, for your willingness to serve and, and for your service to the town as town meeting members. We have three town meeting members here who have stepped up and, and are willing to serve in the CPAC committee. And, and that's really impressive. So thank you so much for that. So just to clarify, Mr. Helmut, your motion is for all three of the candidates here for, for appointments? Okay, and that has been seconded?
I'm not sure that I actually said the magic words, so I, I do move a confirmation, approval, appointment. That's it. One of those, we get it right, of the three candidates.
Okay, great. And, and that has been seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to remind folks that the town manager, Adam Chaplaine, has a vote as per the Community Preservation Acts Committee's bylaw. So with that, Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Chaplaine?
Yes.
It's unanimous six zero vote. Thank you.
Right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item fourteen, Sims Memorial Fund Board of Directors. Update from the Board of Directors, and we also have an appointment before us for Alan Reedy for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. I don't know, do we have Mr. Mar with us tonight, Mr. Chaplaine?
I believe we have both, so I'm gonna bring Alan and John forward.
Sure.
Okay, they should be joining the meeting shortly.
Yeah, and I, I believe we're going to have the update first and then we'll have the proposed appointment of Mr. Reedy second. Good evening, Mr. Mar. See, Mr. Reedy, good evening, Mr. Reedy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And it's Mr. Mar, I believe he's about to, to join us.
Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Mar.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, it's, it's delightful for me to be before the board again. It's been several years since my retirement. Just on a personal note, I probably have attended somewhere, the board used to meet every week. Starting in, when I was nineteen seventy-three when I came on. And if you do the math, it's probably around nine hundred board meetings. And it was frankly the highlight of my life. I mean, people would look forward to the weekend. If the weekend was something for me to just get through in order to get to the Monday meeting. And it's, it's just delightful to, to be before you again. And it, it think, just what I thought these couldn't get any better. I'm at the end of the agenda. But be that as it may, I'm here as the chairman of the Sims Memorial Fund. And I just want to give you briefly a little bit of background as to why I'm here, other than to hopefully welcome Alan, my colleague, town meeting member and member of the Permanent Billing Committee. Until nineteen ninety-four, as you know, Arlington had a community hospital, Sims Sims Hospital, for a variety of reasons, community hospitals fell by the wayside due to low Medicare reimbursements and the proximity of Boston's highly regarded teaching hospitals. Leahy Clinic, which is now part of the Beth Israel system, being Beth Israel, Leahy Health now, took over operation of Sims mainly as a feeder to its Burlington campus. In two thousand and one, Leahy filed for voluntary dissolution of Sims with the Supreme Judicial Court, since it was frankly, was losing money. And attempted in the process to assume control of all of its endowments and accumulated funds in the approximate amount of three million dollars, mostly made up of excess Medicare reimbursements. This select board, at that time, principally led by Charlie Lyons and acting on the advice of the town's crack legal department, said, not so fast. That money belongs to Arlington and its prior patients and citizens. After much negotiations, we reached agreement with Leahy and asked the Supreme Judicial Court to order the establishment of the Sims nonprofit Medical Youth Program Committee, made up of three members, supported by Arlington and three by Leahy. And grants were made by this committee to Arlington nonprofits generally for medical related uses. In two thousand and eight, Leahy and the town decided that it was better that we split the blanket. And without, and with about one baller, one million dollars to be under control of the town and one million to be under control of Leahy, again, to be spent respectively for medical projects in town. The other one million dollars was to be held by Leahy to defray the cost of Sims pensions and for the retention of medical records. In the meantime, since that day, the town end of the committee incorporated as a five oh one C three. And up, and a couple of years ago, we changed with the Secretary of State's office to shorten the mouthful name, which I previously indicated, the Sims Nonprofit Medical Youth Program, to be the simply the Sims Memorial Fund. Charlie Lyons, our longtime chair, has retired from board and thus the vacancy before you this evening. And I'm very glad to see that the manager has proposed Alan Reedy to succeed Charlie in that vacancy. Alan serves as my chair on the Permanent Billing Committee. He would make an excellent addition with his medical administration background. He would join Jackie Keshin, who is the other member along with myself. I currently serve as chair. Our longtime excellent outside counsel, Dick Keshin, has also retired from that, from his practice. And I will assume those council duties, of course, on a pro bono basis. Over the years, we have contributed nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to such organizations as the School Department for Special Programs, Council on Aging for Medical Rights, Boys and Girls, the Boys, Arlington Boys and Girls Club, Arlington Eats, Food Link, the Youth Consultation Center and other Arlington nonprofits. We generally designate only up to five percent of our principal each year for our grants, which we go out for grants in the spring and we just, for this year, we just made our grants a week and a half ago. We invest through Rockland Trust, our principal in conservative investments. I'm here tonight to advise you that Leahy has come to the, but now Beth Israel Leahy has come to the conclusion that the original purpose of the separate one million dollars, which was for medical record retention pension benefits, the better, the, the purpose of that has been fulfilled. And they seek to distribute these funds. And they're proposing that one half of the million dollars goes to the Sims Memorial Fund and Leahy Beth Israel Leahy will take control of the other five hundred thousand dollars. Leahy, Beth Israel Leahy has indicated, in my mind, has clearly shown themselves to be extremely good corporate citizens to the benefit of the town and its citizens over the years. And we, I think we ought to join them at the Supreme Judicial Court and ask for a modification of the original dissolution order to permit the, the distribution of these funds. The additional five hundred thousand dollars will be added to our current principal, which will substantially increase the moral fund's ability to make grants. We generally spend about, as I say, five percent, which is about forty-five thousand or fifty thousand dollars each year. It could raise it up to about seventy or seventy-five thousand. It could raise it up to about seventy or seventy-five thousand, which would greatly enhance our ability to beat medical use nonprofit deeds in the community. I therefore respectfully request that the board take the following vote, which I will propose to you after I feel any questions you might have. And this vote has been previously submitted to the town manager and town council. And I think it was distributed in your packets in the circulating file over the weekend. So, with that, I'm glad to entertain any questions. And once we have done, I feel that any questions, hopefully satisfactorily, I'll propose the vote.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Mar. I knew you would enjoy the meeting tonight. So, we pushed you a little bit further back into the agenda. So, it's good to, it's good to see you. So, I will turn it to the board for questions or comments, and I will start with Mrs. Mahan.
No, thank you, Mr. De Corsi. Well, I do have one question before the motion. I think I heard about the initial negotiations and now a second negotiations. And after this, that funding source will no longer exist. So, this is the last time we go through this process. Am I correct?
I'm sorry, Diane, I didn't get that. We've already, I'm sorry, maybe I understand. We have undertaken the negotiation and they have agreed to essentially split the billion dollars. We only need now to go to the Supreme Judicial Court to amend the original dissolution order, which which the S J C had set aside that one million dollars, gave it over to Leahy for pension benefits and medical use retention. Now, they no longer need it for that, and they're willing to split that million dollars.
Okay, thank you. That clears it up for me. And if I could, Mr. Chair, if we could take these separate, just because one's an appointment and one's a one-time action for the rest of this, I'd like to move that the town of Arlington, acting by and through its select board and town manager, authorizes and encourages the Sims Memorial Fund Board of Directors to do all things necessary and appropriate, including without limitation, filing all necessary motions with the Supreme Judicial Court or other court of competent jurisdiction in conjunction with the Office of the Attorney General to effect a distribution of funds remaining from the dissolution of Sims Hospital, Inc., or any of its related entities to the Sims Memorial Fund to further its corporate purpose of aiding medical use or related organizations, be they public or private in the town of Arlington.
Great. Then thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd.
Thank you. I will second that motion. And thank you, Mr. Mar, for the presentation. I hope Mr. Reedy shares your affinity for watching select board meetings, since he got pushed into the meeting as well. But but I do want to thank you and your many, many years of service. And I can only hope that we have Attorney Heim in our services for as long as the town enjoyed your services as town council.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you a question of Mr. Mar. And so, when the meetings were once a week, or every week, were they shorter?
No, no. It depends on who the chair was. When Harry McCabe was the chair, we were there. Was it unusual for us to be there at quarter one, one o'clock?
Oh, my goodness. Wow. They were made of hardiest stuff back then. Oh, my goodness. Wow. Okay. Well, well, that's it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for Mr. Reedy's appointment?
We're gonna go to Mr. Reedy afterwards. I thank him for his patience, because it's two separate motions. We're gonna deal with this first.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, happy to support this. Thank you, Mr. Mar. It's great to, great to see you in fine form yet again.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. And with Mrs. Mahan's motion, I believe that's consistent with what you were going to propose, Mr. Mar. So, I thank you for all your years of service, both in the employment of the town and since then on the Sims Memorial Fund and for your work and your work at Town Meeting as well.
Don't forget that I'm chairman of your cable advisory committee.
All right. Well, we forgot that. And then thank you for that as well.
Well, he didn't forget it, because I just told, just invited you.
That's right. You just, you refreshed my recollection. Great. Thank you very much. So, on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may also share my sense that Mr. Mar did an excellent job and along with the rest of the committee in drawing up this or negotiating this dissolution. With that, Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mar. Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Reedy. Thank you for waiting a few additional minutes and for your interest in serving on the Sims Memorial Fund Board of Directors. And if you'd like to say a few words to the board before we go to questions and a vote.
And well, by way, good evening, members of the board. It's it's been a thrilling evening. By way of full disclosure, I do need to tell you that I just recently concluded a fairly long career with Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, a founding member of the Beth Israel Leahy Health Network. But now, having retired and seeking to promote domestic bliss, I was responding positively to Mr. Mars' opportunity that he presented to provide my my long-suffering wife with relief at least a couple of times a year. And so, look forward to to actually joining this, this, this very, you know, certainly well-intentioned and, you know, proven source of support for the healthcare needs of the Arlington community. I had a similar experience a number of years ago with respect to the Sims Advisory Committee, where I was fortunate to serve alongside your, your current select board chair on that committee. And unfortunately, we were not able to generate enough interest at that time to to preserve healthcare services at that particular site. But, you know, with the very, very quickly evolving landscape of healthcare services in the greater Boston area. I mean, I do think that this memorial committee, you know, serves a great purpose in the town, and I would certainly look forward to helping as I have done throughout my career at Beth Israel Deaconess, you know, assessing and distributing scarce healthcare dollars to worthy causes. So, I guess with that, I'll just open it up for any questions anybody might have. But again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reedy. I will start with Mr. Hurd.
Sorry about that clicked off. Again, thank you for sticking with us and your willingness to serve in this committee, and we look forward to working with you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins.
Well, I think I'll second that motion that Mr. Hurd.
I move approval of the appointment. It is getting.
No problem. And 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 I seconded it. And clearly, Mr. Reedy, you're qualified, me, both respect to, you know, your work history, but also with your ability to speak so eloquently, eloquently, what you're telling your cheek. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy, for being willing to serve. The advisory committee is very fortunate to have you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy, my AHS touring buddy from the other day. And I know when I first came on onto the scene in politics, which was just town meeting, which I never even envisioned I would do that. I always tried to steer clear of all things political. But as a P T O president up at Bracket School, when I first came on the scene, it seemed like everywhere I turned around, there's Alan Reedy, there's Alan Reedy. And I've always been impressed by when you do get up to speak, you're succinct. You encapsulate everything that needs to be given forth. And your words, starting from back then and honestly, continue until today, are very well-respected and well-heard. So, I'm glad we found another place that you're allowing us to plug you into. I know with John Mar and the third member, you guys will make sure we get the most bang for our buck. And I'm always impressed that, you know, we're lucky enough to get someone of your expertise that we could never afford to pay you. But you're doing it for us, sort of pro bono on this and other activities and committees in Arlington. So, again, my thanks to you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Yeah, and I also want to echo the comments of my colleagues, Mr. Reedy. And you mentioned the Sims Advisory Committee. We worked together years ago on committees. And I've seen the work that you've done at Town Meeting. And you're an individual, when you get up to speak at Town Meeting, people listen and and respect what you have to say. So, we're really pleased that you're you're willing to take on this appointment. So, with a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Reedy, and good luck. And thank you, Mr. Mar.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, ten twenty-three, we're moving on to open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request.
Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard during open forum?
There is a series of hands. Would you like me to just take them in order?
Sure.
So, the first hand raised is John Ward.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Ward. Mr. Ward. Okay.
Doesn't appear as though he has a speaker connecting.
Okay, one.
Let me, he has two, his name comes up twice. Let me try his other name. That may work.
Good evening, Mr. Ward. Okay. All right, why don't we do this? And let's see, we hear from him. Why don't we go to the next name on the list, and we'll see if we can address that issue.
Okay, the next speaker is Rebecca Gruber.
Good evening, Ms. Gruber.
Thank you, Rebecca Gruber, Pleasant Street. I'd like to express my concerns regarding the proposed re precincting. Firstly, I'm wary of the supposition that the new census numbers will require all twenty-one of our precincts to be redrawn to ensure that every precinct has the population of plus or minus five percent of each other. Please be skeptical of that argument being the catalyst for reducing the number of precincts. I suggest that redrawing the precincts, either at the current number of twenty-one or at a reduction to sixteen, would have a dramatic effect on voter engagement in this town. Here are three possible impacts. Every precinct would have to elect all of its town meeting members. I'm very fearful that requiring our electorate to be engaged enough to educate themselves to make that number of decisions is likely unreasonable, and will result in even less engagement in our local town elections, both now and in the future. The requirement that the highest four vote-getters fill three-year terms, the second highest two-year terms, and so on, may affect future elections as the popularity of incumbents running in any particular year may be inordinately skewed, limiting the possibility of non-incumbent candidates being elected in that year. And finally, specific precincts' participation in town governance and in voting vary significantly. As we merge residents of different precincts together, to what extent will the loudest voices be those who already have a voice, drowning out the voices of our less vocal or more marginalized town residents? And this is particularly concerning if we reduce the number of precincts from twenty-one to sixteen. And while I recognize that Arlington must redraw its precinct boundaries if legally required to do so, we do not have to also reduce our number of precincts. There has been recognition by many in town governance, including some of you, of the value of town meeting members reaching out and developing relationships with their precinct neighbors. As a new town meeting member myself, and thus a candidate who recently campaigned and had the honor of being elected by my precinct eight neighbors, I would like to share with you the joy and the responsibility I feel as a representative working on behalf of my fellow precinct residents. While campaigning and now as an elected official, I walk in the streets of my precinct, every block. This is a special opportunity due to the very walkable size of our precincts for a member of town governance like myself to engage in outreach with the folks we are elected to represent. Looking at the proposed re precincting map, I fear that this sort of neighborly connection will be almost impossible. Not only will each town meeting member have to represent more residents, but, for example, precinct eight will significantly increase geographically as well. In the initial proposal, I saw precinct eight stretched from below Pleasant Street almost up to the water tower, a geographic distance that is not very walkable. My fear is that this re precincting will negatively impact some of the very positive attributes of precinct eight, such as established communication systems.
Yeah, if you could just wrap up.
Yep, informal mutual aid networks and the other ad hoc mechanisms that develop in caring vibrant neighborhoods. Because what we all refer to as precincts are, in fact, in Arlington neighborhoods, not just political boundaries, but communities of residents who have over time come to know one another as neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber.
Okay.
All right.
Can anybody hear me?
Is this, is this Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for listening. Last week, I had delivered a two-page narrative that laid out the serious problems surrounding the candidate selection process for a tenant member of the board. There are two hundred and forty different housing authorities in this state with an undetermined number of tenant organizations. And the real problem in the law is that the tenant organizations were given the authority to make a selection of two to five candidates. Well, they didn't spell out how those tenant organizations are supposed to go about that. So, we have a myriad of of processes for coming together with submitting these candidates. This has nothing to do necessarily with the town, but the town puts their stamp of authority by electing, by appointing the member. And you want that to be as democratic a process as possible. Now, the Arlington Housing Authority has two, a little over seven hundred residences, and less than thirty percent of those were properly notified of the opportunity. I want to commend you that you selected the best person out of the list that was given to you tonight, and I'm grateful for that. But I'm I'm hoping that in some way that we've got, now we have two years to get the legislature to correct these shortcomings in the law that allows the tenant organizations to willy-nilly come up and do whatever they want with submitting names to the towns for their review. And I'm hoping that somebody in your, in and amongst of you that are listening will enjoy me or will join me in lobbying Mr. Sean Garbali that to see that this kind of correction is made to Public Housing Notice twenty twenty-one dash one that clears up this process. So that in two years from now, the candidates that you receive represent our true representation. the candidates that you receive represent, are a true representation of what the spirit of the law says, because the spirit of the law says clearly that all residents should be notified of the opportunity, and that simply did not happen here. I don't know if any of you people actually took an opportunity to read that narrative, but for what it's worth, it's still, it appears in the agenda tonight if somebody wants to take a look. And I thank you for your taking your time to listen to me.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. And I will point out that letter is in correspondence received. We will be addressing that later, and board members did receive it. Thank you, Mr. Chap, telling Nick's name on the list?
Petru Sofio.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for your time. I'm here at the meeting to let the select board know about an issue with the new signal at Lake Street in the Minuteman. Recently, cars have been driving onto the path at an alarming rate. Some even going down towards A O A or to Lindwood Street. This is very dangerous, especially when it happens on weekends, when small families are often riding on this trail. I'd like to see the board make it a priority for D V W to make swift and dedicated, to be swift and dedicated in making changes, so it's not possible to drive on the Minuteman. I also wanted to comment on the select board's upcoming Mass and Appleton Short Term Plan discussion. I would like to encourage the board to get this item looked at and voted on as soon as possible. It's been over a year since Charlie Proctor was killed at this intersection, and there have been multiple injuries since, not even in this past July. Please consider bringing this item to the board very soon, so we can hopefully make some changes to save some lives. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Sofio. Next, I think, I believe we have two more hands raised. Okay.
Next is Lynette Culverhouse.
Good evening, Ms. Culverhouse.
Hi. Yeah, I wanted to say that I am really impressed with the Net Zero Plan and recognize that a lot of work has gone into coming up with a really good document. What concerns me, though, is that while it is a great document, that it's very easy to congratulate ourselves for a great document, but I'm still seeing residents pulling down houses, tearing down trees, driving gas-consuming cars. And I really want to see us and urge you to please have a publicity campaign to residents to impose on them the urgency of the environmental crisis we're in. Every mature tree that gets chopped down is a carbon-consuming vehicle that we're removing and therefore threatening our environment even more. Every house that we pull down is in environmental, has a negative environmental impact. And I can't tell you how many SUVs and gas-consuming cars I see driving around town. And I think that what needs to happen is the town leadership needs to put out some kind of publicity campaign saying the town, the town is urging residents to recognize the urgency of our environmental crisis and to take individual responsibility for improving it. And, and you know, while I recognize this country values individual rights over the rights of the whole community or the earth, I think that we can, as a community, take that kind of leadership and model for our residents how we would like, how we like, would like each person to take responsibility for the crisis. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I believe there's one more person for open forum.
Beth Malofchek.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Malofchek. Yep, I'll set the floor, Joyce.
Hi, thank you, Beth Malofchek, Russell Street. Sorry, I'm really tired. The Net Zero Plan, a lot of effort has gone into it. I recognize that. And frankly terrified, as I think many of my fellow community members are, with the new U N report that's been released on Code Red for Humanity. So I recognize, as we all do, that the earth is warming faster than anticipated and that we need to lower greenhouse gases, as Lynette just pointed out, and we need some town leadership on that. And I thank her for raising those points. I hope you all embrace them. And in removing carbon, we have that excellent God-given device of the tree. So I speak to ask all of you to embrace the notion that we need a tree canopy plan as extensive and well-thought-out and with as much effort as the Net Zero Plan. I think trees are mentioned in one tiny spot in the Net Zero Plan. I forget what page. I know Ken sent it to me many months back. But I think we need a comprehensive tree canopy plan. We need to be planting many more trees than we plant now. I hope there'll be some funding for that, perhaps part of the thirty-four million. I think we need to inventory all of our forested areas, our public forested areas that we have right now to see how they can be maintained and made even more efficient for the health and well-being of the community and to lower and reduce the warming. Right now, we're all told, if you read the Atlantic piece on the U N report, we need to reduce the warming, slow the warming to any extent possible. That means preserving our trees, planting many, many more than we're doing now. And as Lynette said, let's stop cutting them down. So maybe we can plug the hole. Perhaps the board could direct the tree canopy to look at the holes in the current tree bylaw, who is required to file a tree plan? I believe Article thirty-eight Posse Mietens Cement Article for Foundations has a big loophole in it. If the footprint is not changed, they're not required to file a tree plan. So we don't want to lose those mature trees on those pieces of property, because we all know how important the work that the trees do to reduce the warming and remove particulate matter, the pollution. The other thing is, I'd like to remind everybody about the forty million dollar override.
Excuse me, Ms. Malofchek, you're over three minutes. So if you completed that first point.
Let me close with the forty million dollar override. Thank you very much. So can we stop spending and perhaps use some of that thirty-four million dollars to pay down the debt? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that completes open forum for this evening. The next item, we're going to take two items together. Item twelve is a request for a special one-day beer and wine license, September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at the Ed Burns Arena for Tonday Run. Item fifteen for approval is a beer garden at the Jason Russell House Saturdays during September twenty-twenty-one. Brian Burke, the president of Burke's Brewing Company, which I believe is in Hanover, Mass, is with us this evening. Mr. Burke? And Patsy Kramer, I believe, is with us as well. Good evening, Mr. Burke.
Good evening. How are you this evening?
Good, thanks. Thank you for staying up with us. I know it's been late and it's been a long meeting and I believe Patsy is going to be joining us as well. So we decided to combine both of the items. If you want to just talk to us briefly about each one, then we'll open it up to questions from the board.
Yeah, certainly. My name is Brian Burke. I own a small little brewery down in Hanover, Massachusetts on the South Shore. I, until recently, was a resident of Watertown, so I'm very familiar with the area. Spent a lot of time biking through Watertown for the Minuteman Trail. And I read with some interest a few weeks back about the former beer garden that was in town, conducted by my former employer, Aeronaut. And, you know, when they were unable to do it this year, you know, with the restrictions, slow to be sort of dropped and easing of the COVID restrictions. But it was still, it seemed to be a good amount of desire to have a beer garden in town, that people found it to be a positive social activity. So I approached a couple of members of the town to see if they'd be much interest. And I was introduced to Patsy, and we met and we talked a little bit about the Jason Russell House. And she showed me around the grounds here, and we thought it might be a great place for people to spend some time outside, listen to some music. I think in light of the last year and a half, and perhaps with what's starting to go on now with COVID, that just a place to go outdoors, family community, sort of focused event would be something that would be nice. And as a quick aside to that, as I was having those discussions, I was approached by Joe Connolly of the Recreation Department about the road race. And he asked if I would also participate in having a beer tent.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Burke. Good evening, Patsy. Thank you for staying along here with us tonight. Did you want to add anything?
I've just, I've just been representing the Arlington Historical Society that we're very pleased at the possibility of hosting a beer garden on our lawn. And we know that the original one was very, very popular and draws a lot of family people. And we think for us, it's just great visibility to have people share our lawn and be aware of the Jason Russell House. So we're thrilled at the opportunity.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll turn it to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. I will move approval on both requests and thank Mr. Burke for choosing Arlington. We had a really good experience with the beer garden when we had it in the center. I've had a lot of constituents who have reached out asking when we're going to have another beer garden. We weren't able to do it this summer, but there's definitely a lot of interest. And I think it'd be very well received. I want to thank the Arlington Historical Society for stepping up and giving us a location, given that our lost location is under construction. So I do look forward to this. I think it's good for the town, and I think it's good for the residents, and I will be there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to hold off on seconding for a little bit, because I need to ask a couple of questions regarding COVID and how you're going to approach that. I ask because the the Sand Sculpture Festival in Revere Beach, pretty open, they were recommending that people still mask. And so I'm just wondering what kind of advice are you going to give to the people for September, which is pretty close by. And even though, I mean, I'm hoping things don't get worse. You know, I don't know how much better it's going to be than they are now.
I think what we would do is follow the advice of the Board of Health in terms of at that point in time, how things look and whatever they suggest, we'll be sure to follow.
Yeah, and to second what Patsy said, I agree with you there. Unfortunately, we have a lot of experience in the last year and a half operating in this kind of environment. So, you know, my staff is pretty well-versed. We will take advice and guidance of local authorities with regards to that. If masking is what's required, you know, we'll do so. We've done that for a year and a half. We'll have the usual, you know, ant sanitizers available. We can clean common surfaces, you know, going into the bathrooms. I think it really depends. You'll have to monitor, because, you know, we are seeing a little bit of a spike right now. I'm hearing some words that it may be plateauing, but, you know, I'll believe it when I see it. I think we'll monitor. It's still about four weeks away. We'll, we'll, we'll monitor. We'll do what guidance that we're given to manage it.
Yeah, and I'll just say that I, I'm a little concerned about the potential of sending mixed messages to the residents, where we're telling people, you know, to mask indoors. And we're giving guidance means if you're vaccinated, and and you're okay, because you don't have people who are, you know, sick in your household or whatever, then then you can, you know, feel somewhat more comfortable doing it. I just still feel that we need to be more consistent rather than less. You know, no one's going to probably be one hundred percent consistent in this. I'm certainly not. You know, I mean, I kind of calibrate the risk that I take. And so I don't want us to be too aggressive in things. And I certainly understand the desire of people to socialize. And so I guess I just want to make sure that the town manager and our department of health feel comfortable saying, even though the board has signed off on this, meaning that we are going to advise against it. I'd hope that we would support them in that. So with that, I will second. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. And I appreciate very much the detail of the care that was in your applications, particularly for the, for the beer garden event. The attention, I appreciate particularly the attention given to the safe service plan and the emphasis on the tip certification. That's really important, and it gives me a high level of confidence that you'll not only pay attention to that, but also to some of the health concerns that my colleague just mentioned as well. So that's great. And I think, speaking for myself, I'm happy to support both of these. I have confidence in our vigilant Health Department, Board of Health, and Town Manager to really provide good guidance. And, you know, I think they feel like it's not safe to go forward. I know that they'll say so, and that you understand. I think, so I'm fine with it. And I think there'll be a lot of people that, provided that we're allowed to have, if still have, able to have the event, will be, will be very happy to see a return of the beer garden near Arlington Center. My only question is, if we know that if Jason Russell drank beer, will there be one named after it? Because there's an obvious marketing tie-in here.
I think we could have some fun with that.
I bet we could.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just something to put out there, and you all can sort of ponder on it or not. I know when the beer garden first started Saturdays in the summer at its previous site, similar to last month, that first month, it seemed to like rain just about every Saturday, you know, pretty decent rain, not heavy, heavy. And everyone was looking for information, is there a rain date? Is there not a rain date? So my thing, my question to you would be, if circumstances dictate that we can do this event, if it's, how are you going to get the word out if Saturday's a rain out? And you don't have to. It's just that, I know, you know, the first year, it was sort of like going back and forth. And I'm not saying right now, we're not approving that. You can do Sundays also, but if you kind of look at the weather map out, and that's something you need to revisit, I'd certainly be open to that. But, and it's not, I'm not saying it's a requirement. You have to tell me tonight or tell anybody ever what you're going to do in terms of, you have to call it for rain. I just wanted to put it out there. That was like the only big issue I had the first year with the beer garden, because I'm like, I don't know. I don't have anything to do with it. So anyway, so I wish you luck.
At the Historical Society, we would not be able to go to a Sunday, just because of the guide program that we have on Sundays. The Historical Society has a website, and I would think that we could arrange to take advantage of that in terms of announcing if it was canceled.
I'll leave that with Mrs. Kramer, Patsy, and maybe just double-check with Attorney Heim where, what your organization is, if somehow it involves alcohol. I'll let you follow that up with Doug. I'm just being overly paranoid, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And I also support Mr. Hurd's motion. Thank you, Mr. Burke, for your interest. And thank you, Mrs. Kramer, for finding the space with the Historical Society. And hopefully, we have nice weather in September. And hopefully we have nice weather in September. So on a motion, this again is on two items. One is the town day round, the other is the Jason Russell House for Saturdays in September. On a motion by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hine.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's a five zero vote.
Great. Best of luck, Mr. Burke.
Great. Thank you very much.
I hope I see most of you there. It'd be great to meet you.
Wish you good weather.
Great. Thank you very much. You too. Okay, so that is items 12 and 15. Item 16 is a request for on-street overnight parking waiver, Adler Sue, 106 Paul Revere Road.
Adler is here if you'd like me to promote them.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Sue.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, and before you start, I apologize for the late hour. A few things ran late and the best intentions was to have you on about an hour ago. So I apologize for that, but if you could tell us about the application and the circumstances at Paul Revere Road.
Certainly. So I spoke with the board in 2013 and at the time, you know, it's just after we had our first child. And I, you know, the case of the bike property is that we have a single car garage here. That really only holds a compact car. And, you know, since then, you know, we, our family has grown and, you know, job situation has changed. And so in order to be able to get to work for both myself and my wife and be able to, as well as do various pickups and drop-offs for the children, you know, we needed to get a second car. And so that's the reason for the request.
Okay, and I'm going to turn it to the board. Just for clarification, right now you have one parking waiver, is that correct?
I do not have any parking waiver.
Oh, you don't have any? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. All right. Well, I will turn it to, you have a single car garage and that's where your car is parked right now on the Paul Revere side of the property.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, I will turn it to the board. Mr. Diggins.
I'm all confused, you know, because I thought, I mean, when I was reading the packet, I thought I guess you were asked to come back if you, I'm sorry, do you, Mr. Chair, you were asked to come back once you got a second car?
That's correct. Yes, when we got, when we got a second car, I was asked to come back and speak with you guys.
And so the packet kind of led me to feel that you were almost like, not guaranteed, but that we were going to approve it. And I guess I'm trying to understand the why it is that the passport didn't just say no at the beginning in order to be consistent. I see a hand raising over there. And so maybe I'm going to stop here and then ask the chair if maybe he would be willing to let my colleague respond and maybe help me out here in understanding this.
Yeah, no, I think that that makes good sense. So I'll call in Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going by my institutional memory, when we had this hearing, it was pointed out that there was a garage. They had one car. We asked Mr. Sue if that car, we normally don't grant requests if there is a garage. And this is my memory. I can be corrected if I'm wrong. And then the question was posed to the then-board by Mr. Sue that he could certainly put one car in the garage, but he anticipated possibly getting a second. So if he could get his one overnight parking permit on Paul Revere Road, because I think we had other people that came in that night. We gave, and what he was told is we can't give you permission for a request that hasn't been purchased and registered and has a license plate. And that if and when he does that, and I think we were given the sense that that might happen in the next few months. That's when I told him, when you get that vehicle and it's properly registered, you can come back to the board. It was represented to us that it might be in the next month or two. And I said, then I'll put you on that next month agenda. And fast forward for whatever, I guess, happened in circumstances, they've been using one car and I haven't spoken to Mr. Sue. And that second car, he anticipated purchasing within a couple of months in 2013. He's just now doing it 2021. Is that right, Mr. Sue?
Well, I mean, I guess, yeah, my recollection of the conversation was, you know, we discussed, you know, the one, the, you know, the, you know, possibly growing the family at the time. And, you know, clearly that didn't happen right then. And so we were, you know, we made do, we made do for the past, you know, several years with one car.
So is that in the garage? So you do not have one or any overnight parking waiver to park on Paul Revere Road?
That's correct. There, I do not currently have any overnight parking on, or on Paul Revere right now.
And I guess just to close this out, when this language was written, it was with the anticipation that he would be coming in in the next month or two, which is why I said I'm going to ask this to be tabled and put it on for the next month. So I
So, Mr. Chair? Through you to Ms. Mahan.
Oh, hang on one second, Mr. Diggins. Did you want to say anything further, Mrs. Mahan, or is that?
What it was, was approval pending the anticipated purchase of a new vehicle. Mr. Sue was asked to resubmit his petition when he purchases another vehicle. As soon as it's purchased, it would be included on the agenda for the next selectments meeting. So what that means, that doesn't mean, what it means is we couldn't evaluate your response. We have been giving them to people on Paul Revere Road, but that was just a vote of the board that was saying you were seeking, you know, conditional approval for that one spot in front of your house, anticipating you might need that. And what the board voted was if and when you do purchase that vehicle, you need to come back. And I guess the only part that's missing here is we're doing an agenda item based on the 2013 agenda minutes versus I mean, I have no, I have no problem doing that as long as I guess it took him nine years, which is fine, or 10 years to come in for it. But I can tell you, the board anticipated that this second vehicle purchase was going to happen in a day or two. So what we haven't done is sent this to the traffic unit just to verify that one car's in the garage and the other space is empty. So I don't know what my colleagues want to do on this.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I'm going to return to Mr. Diggins and then hear from Mr. Heard and Mr. Helmut.
Well, until we do our big parking review, we know, or get this committee of the select board on parking up and get something out of it. My goal is to be as consistent as possible with past practices. And so it seems like we have given these parking waivers on Paul Revere Road. And in that we were going to do it in this situation. Or at least we were, it seemed like we were leaning strongly towards doing it because it seems like in that meeting we did some waivers. So with that, I am going to motion to approve the waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Heard.
So I would just say from the outset, absent what happened in the previous meeting, this, if this application came before us, just standalone, then we probably would not approve it just because we've had a number of these applications before us recently. And always the first question is, do you have off-street parking, which they do? I certainly will rely on Mrs. Mahan's memory of the meeting as the only board member that was at that meeting that currently still serves. Just going strictly off the meeting minutes, I think there is at least some sort of a reasonable reliance standard that the applicant could look at the meeting minutes, supplement that with his own memory and say there was a conditional approval pending the return and when they purchased the car. And I think Mrs. Mahan is correct that for the board to have approved that at the time, there would be an anticipation that that approval would only last a few months. But if the applicant purchased a new vehicle with a reliance on the fact that he had this conditional approval to that would allow him to park the car, I would tend to support Mr. Diggins' motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heard. And I'll take that as a second. Is that a second?
Yeah, that's a second. And again, I'm sorry to keep going, but, and I say that just as a qualification that generally, this doesn't change our policy as to issuing overnight parking permits. If there's off-street parking, this is just specific to this one application is why I would be inclined to support Mr. Diggins' motion and second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. For my benefit, because I'm a new member of the board, Mr. Chair, could you or another member kind of brief me quickly on what our precedent has been on Paul Revere? I mean, I know the street well and that there's no driveway to speak of on these properties. When we've given off-street permits before, have we done so for a second car with, you know, in situations where one car could be in the garage, but not a second?
I can answer. We may have to get you the answers on all of the circumstances there later. My understanding is from Mr. Sue's house down to Mass Ave, several of the homes don't have any driveways. You may have, and a couple of those may even be multifamily homes. So there might be more than one waiver. I'm not aware of any where there is garage parking that the waiver has been granted. But clearly between his house and Mass Ave, there are a number of waivers that have been granted. Perhaps for other reasons.
Yeah. I'm going to support Mr. Diggins' motion, I think for the reasons that Mr. Heard articulated in this case. I think, you know, I'm not, I think it's great that the applicant went a few years just serving on one car. You know, that's admirable. I don't feel like that he should be penalized for that. And no one's suggesting that at all, because I understand that, you know, the expectation of the board's prior conditional approval would have been much more time limited. So I get that. But I think, you know, still, I feel like with Mr. Heard, I think there's a reasonable case to be made for what could be an exception to our general precedent.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. And I will also support on a limited basis that Mr. Heard outlined. I think had Mr. Sif, you were here for the first time this evening without the precedent back in 2013, I couldn't support the additional car. But given the minutes from that meeting and your collective recollection with Mrs. Mahan, I view this as an exception that I could go along with and given your reliance on that vote of the board back in 2013. But to Mr. Heard's point, I think we need to stress that that really truly is an exception based on those unique circumstances that happened that evening. So with a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Heard for approval, Attorney Hine.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Should I have this vote?
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sue, for your patience this evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so just for board members, unfortunately, we didn't hit the 11 o'clock target. There's a couple of items here. We are going to put off the upper presentation. Mr. Chaplin may have a brief request on that. On the Remote Participation Study Committee, I don't expect, anticipate a long discussion on that if the board is inclined to vote on that. But I'd like to ask for extension of the board's 11 o'clock rule. And bear in mind, we do still have an executive session after this. But for our public session, I don't think we will need more than five more minutes, seven at the outside.
So
So if there's a motion, okay, thank you, Mr. Heard. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so why don't we say at 11:15 on the public session, I believe we need a vote for that, Attorney Hine?
Mr. Heard? Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
I am an hour away from home and I got to get home by T, so just keep that in mind. So it's not simply a matter of my, like, wanting to go along. I got to get home at some point. So yes, you know.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Item 19 is a vote on the Remote Participation Study Committee. This was a committee that was created at town meeting earlier this year. When we had the discussions about coming back into the chambers, Mr. Helmut had done quite a bit of work on the select board. So I will put it out to the board for perhaps a statement of interest or nomination.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Helmut.
I would be happy to serve.
Okay.
Nominate Mr. Helmut.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, all right. Mr. Diggins, any comment?
No, I'll find.
All right. So on a motion by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Hine.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helen?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Is it an honest vote?
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. All right, item 20, Mr. Chaplin, I believe we're going to put the funding presentation off to the next meeting. But was there a request that you wanted to make tonight for some of the limited items in that?
Correct. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I wanted to briefly say we do want to kick off public feedback on the expenditure of these funds. So what I will do is film a presentation that I otherwise would have given tonight, release that this week, and then open up a public survey later this week until the second or first week of September. Then come back to the board on September 13th to present the framework that will have been presented in the video with updates, updates based on what was received from the public. And then come back at the board's meeting at the end of September, which I think falls on the 27th, and hopefully request final endorsement for the framework and some set of expenditures. That said, tonight, what I would like to ask the board for positive consideration on are three discrete items. One, a vote to formally accept these funds. That's the actual, the primary action the board needs to take to then authorize further expenditures, just like really any federal grant the town would receive. Then I would ask for your endorsement of two immediate expenditures, even while we go through this public vetting process. One, an approval of up to $1.6 million being expended for water and sewer investments. I put in the memo for current needs. This would be specifically utilized for the meter replacement program that I think most of the board is likely aware of that stems from the current meter system no longer being supported by the vendor that we are pursuing via town council. And then a second discrete item of a $50,000 award to the Housing Corporation of Arlington so that they can fund a portion of their homelessness prevention program and actually make awards to qualified people in need of that aid. So if the board would consider action on those, I would then follow through on the other steps I mentioned in terms of videotaping the presentation. I just aged myself, send videotape and recording a presentation, issuing that and kicking off this public process.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. I will turn it to the board. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to support each of the town managers' requests.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Heard?
Just had an image in my mind of you putting the videotape in there, those old, just like Christmas morning, 91. I'd be happy to second that request and look forward to the more expanded discussion.
Mr. Diggins? Mr. Diggins?
Questions, but no questions. Thanks.
Okay, Mrs. Mahan?
I would certainly like this on the next board agenda. In light of, we have to get our colleague, Mr. Diggin, to home safely sooner than rather than later. But I really was dismayed that when the president released this federal funding, he stated top three areas where it could go to. And of the top three was to pay a fair and equitable living wage to our first responders, police, fire, public works. And when you made your statement to the advocate, granted, there are 10 different categories you can spend this on. You only mentioned nine, and you left that out. And I really feel one of the thrusts of Opera is to address that justifiable expense. And I don't see anything about involving the unions in any of this process. And I certainly want to be involved in it as a member of the board. I'm not going to go into it now, but I I have what other city and town managers have done with offer funding in terms of what they've been offering to the unions. Winchester offered 20% over four years, but I'll stop there. I'm just really dismayed. But in light of the hour, that's fine. I'm willing to go along with what the manager has suggested. And I do want to make a statement to all the town union employees. I can tell you, I don't consider this free money. If I did consider it free money, I certainly would not make the statement that the town does not spend free money on the unions. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I'll support the motions as well. And I do want to point it to the board. The manager and I spoken about this agenda item because we had so much on, we agreed that if we ran out of time, he would make the presentation afterwards. So it really was at my request, not that he is putting off this discussion. Because we just had so much before us earlier this evening, and there were some things that took longer than others. But we will put that on the next agenda. The manager will put together his presentation and we'll give this more time at the next meeting. So with a motion, I believe by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mr. Heard, Attorney Hine.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, and items 21 through 24 is correspondence received. I hear a motion from Mrs. Mahan for receipt. And a second by Mr. Heard. Anybody with any questions or comments?
Okay, I would just ask the the chair and the town manager just to go over these tomorrow, the next day. And if they need to be sent to either the manager or another department, that would be great.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Okay, Attorney Hine.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Okay, new business, Attorney Hine?
No, no business.
Mr. Chaplain?
I will pass on the business tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Helmuth?
I'm in business.
Mr. Diggins?
I'm going to pass too. I got some, but not later, not the time.
Okay, Mr. Heard?
My only thing is that I'm going to follow up with Mr. Diggins tomorrow so he can explain to me what's over his shoulder. I've been looking at it all night.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
My new business is if Attorney Hine could call me tomorrow anytime between eight and 10 or after two. I just have a question about open meeting law preamble.
Do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I don't have any new business given the hour. So I will take a motion to adjourn. We do have an executive session on here. So the motion, we will not be coming back to public session. Do I have a motion for that?
I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to take a motion that the board suspend and go and reconvene an executive session. And when we come out of the executive session, it will be solely for the purposes to adjourn the meeting. Is that correct, Attorney Hine? There's no votes expected outside of?
If I may just add that the the two purposes we're going to executive session, if 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 Ms. Mahan will take a friendly suggestion is that one, to approve executive session minutes and examine their appropriateness for relief, those listed on the agenda. And number two, to discuss the open meeting law completed, Mr. Christopher Loretta.
And that's acceptable, Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that with the request, Mrs. Mahan, if we can. I believe we can adjourn from executive session, just for the benefit of ACMI.
Great. Okay, Mr. Helmuth or Mr. Diggins, any comments, questions? Okay, so on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Heard, Attorney Hine.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. That ends the public component of the meeting tonight. Thank you very much to the members of the board and to the public.